Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Here.
Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougal?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? At this time, we'll go to item three on our agenda, Announcements and Committee Reports. And item three A is the COVID-19 update. So as of this week, the state of Washington reports 694,000 confirmed cases and 9,554 deaths due to COVID. Statewide, 72.7% of all those people 12 years age and older are fully vaccinated. In Skagit County, as of today, we've had 13,157 cases, and we've had 144 fatalities, and 769 people have been hospitalized. Skagit County's current rate is 361 cases per 100,000 over the last 14 days, with a hospitalization rate of 16.9%. 207,804 vaccine doses have been administered in Skagit County. 70.9% of those ages 12 and older are fully vaccinated, and 76.7% of those ages 12 and up are partially vaccinated in Skagit County. While case rates continue to decline steadily, our hospitalization rates continue to remain high. From the data, we know that the vast majority of those contracting COVID-19 are people that are unvaccinated. In order to see our hospitalization rates decrease, more Skagitontonians need to get vaccinated. Local data shows that 26 people aged less than 65 years old that tested positive for COVID between July 1st and November 30th of 2021 died from COVID. All but four of these individuals were unvaccinated. Skagit County Public Health has announced that beginning today, Monday, December 13th, COVID-19 booster doses are available by appointment at the Skagit County Public Health Office, as well as the Skagit County Fairgrounds. Last weekend, the Washington State Department of Health released a statement which confirmed the presence of Omicron variant in Washington State. The best public health measure to protect people to slow transmission and reduce the likelihood of a new variant emerging is to vaccinate. That concludes my update tonight. Are there any questions or concerns? All right, we'll move on then to the next item, which is item three B, and this is our Port City Liaison Committee update.
Mayor Geir.
Yes, Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thanks. So Councilmember Young, Councilmember Carter, and myself were all in attendance, along with you, and we had Ms. Wetnam, our city attorney, which was great in the room, and a number of other folks from the port and the city. We talked a little bit about COVID, kind of all in a holding pattern for both entities. The big thing we discussed was just that there's some three major city-port agreements that we want to hammer out the details, and we're really pleased that both the port and the city are working really well together to get them done, and hopefully will come before council very soon. One's a second street right-of-way, which will allow them to, the port, to have some extra space for whatever kind of work they, tenants they are able to entice. But the big thing is, is that we preserve the street, but we have a long-term lease with them so they can have some predictability. Talked a little bit about the Pier Two processed water. In our local agreement, they've ended up having some more storm water than expected, and so we're making some modifications, which is, which is good for both groups. And then finally, just the outfall, which I think we're going to discuss further later today. But really good meeting. We would like to, hopefully in the next year, do a joint meeting between the port and the city for the public to attend, and then continue to work on the maritime plan for recruiting jobs and businesses in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Cleland. Item three C is our Public Safety Committee update.
Mayor Geir.
Mr. Miller.
So Public Safety Committee met December 7th. From the Fire Department, the hot items were making sure the budget, getting all their budget numbers done for the year. They're looking at District 17, which is Gwemyss, a possible boat, to see if that would fit in with what they're working on. They're looking to sell it for $4,500, which sounds like a great price, except you got to factor in all the training that may or may not have to go with that. So again, something the chief was discussing with the group. Wildland firefighting capabilities, they're thinking well in advance for the summertime, which is great. So they talked about a few ideas, that and working with the Parks Department as well. Had one retirement and one resignation since we last met, so they're working to fill those. And talked about, as we've talked a lot about on council, the ladder truck, and that Pierce, the manufacturer of that ladder truck, does have a performance bond. So I think we're all feeling more comfortable about all that. From the Police Department, two new officers are working in Anacortes now, Officer Lindquist and Officer Danielle, I think, Officer Danielle, and looking at February Academies, another officer in process. And looking to fill the captain's vacancies, 2022 is the accreditation year, so it's a big deal for the Police Department to work that accreditation. Talked about some of the new laws specifically with regards to 12-gauge shotguns, and in our packet, you'll see the grants with the, with the county for some compressed air equipment for less-than-lethal force, some Kevlar and lightweight ballistic shields. And then, again, talked about the additional officer for the Drug Task Force, as we've talked about on council, and also being able to use that to leverage off the forensic crime detectives. So that was it from the Police Department, unless I missed anything, Ms. Cleland McGrath, or Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Item three D is our Finance Committee update.
Mayor Geir.
Mr. Walters.
Finance Committee met on Wednesday. We talked about a number of things. First of all, we've discussed the option of including an additional police officer position in the budget. When they assemble the budget initially, they include a number of estimates, including insurance rates and all of those types of things. And then, as we get closer to the new year, they're able to recalculate and determine precisely what those rates will be, what those other uncertain costs will be. And after figuring all that out, we found that we can fund all but $40 of a new police officer. So I've got a $20 bill right here. That'll cover half. We can talk more about that on the, on the budget line item here in our agenda, but I thought that that was useful. John Lunsford attended our meeting to talk about the Skateboard Park, which we've received $500,000 to help refurbish from an anonymous donor. His suggestion was that we kick in $100,000 from city funds, which would match another $100,000 from community groups, and probably be leveraged into even more money that would get us closer to $1 million for replacement of the Skateboard Park, which, as we know, has a number of problems and really needs to be replaced. And we were, we were very cognizant of the fact we don't make that decision, but we're supportive of that concept. And so he'll bring that forward to us later. It will likely be spent out of REIT, and we asked that when that's brought forward, that they also bring forward a backgrounder on REIT, including how much money we have left over, because at the moment, we are mostly funding our pavement management program out of REIT and not general fund dollars. We talked a little bit about the heart of Anacortes. We talked about the fact that on December 27th, we may need to have a five-minute meeting for a final check run. Otherwise, we were planning to not hold a full council meeting on that day. And then we talked about the final 2021 budget amendment, and we specifically asked for more detail about the facilities line item, which is over budget by 50% or $250,000. The city audit is almost done, and they have cleaned up, staff has cleaned up the trust fund issue that is driven by the new audit standard. Exit conference should be scheduled soon.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Any comments? All right, we'll move on then to item three E, our Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee report.
Mayor Geir?
Yes, Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. This is an easy one. The Hacks Committee met on December 9th, and we continued to work on our upcoming presentation to council that will take place on January 10th about our social services study and our ideas for filling the gaps in those services in our community.
Wonderful. Thank you. Then on to item three F, our Planning Committee update. Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Absolutely. We just had our Planning Committee meeting at 5:00 today, and the main thing we discussed, which will come forward in the near future, is the idea of waiving impact fees and hopefully GFC fees for early learning facilities that have at least 25% of low-income students, just to try to encourage and make one little effort, right, in support of those, that needed type of care in our community, and it's been a challenge. So we're working on that, and it should come forward, I think, January 10th or so. Beyond that, just kind of a normal meeting, not too much to discuss. Maybe Mr. Walters or Ms. Ri, Ms., sorry, Moulton might have something to add, but I think that's about it.
Thank you. Our Traffic Safety Committee report.
Mayor Geir?
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Traffic Safety Committee met last Wednesday, December 8th. Mr. Miller and I were there with staff, and we talked about the upcoming parking code update. A lot of that is to do with consistency of language and some parking changes just for ease of enforcement, such as at the Kiwanis Park at Gwemyss Ferry, that'll be turned to two-hour parking, for example. Also, there is going to be a one-way directional on Sixth West of the Gwemyss Ferry landing, and then up that curve, just like they do during the pullout. So all of the neighbors on that block will be notified personally by door hangers and knocks to check with them. So the communication will be forthcoming on that from staff to, to the residents. We are, oh, also, there will be a pedestrian lane added along that curve along the shoreline, which will be really beneficial for people. Then we talked about crosswalks at 15th and D with flashing beacons in conjunction with the Samish Tribe project happening there, because of course, concerns with speeds coming down the hill from D Avenue, and also ferry traffic that really likes to use that as a cut up to 32nd. So that will improve safety for a lot of folks there. We talked about some, a few constituents' concerns that we'll address personally about speeding. That's a common one that we hear, particularly when the 32nd and M Avenue roundabout will be constructed. Residents on 34th Street have noticed a lot of speeding, and when that construction's happening, they expect more of that to happen. So, so we talked about dealing with that, with message boards and communication, and maybe if people want to park out in front of their houses on the street during that period, that might be helpful, too. It's kind of a natural calming effect for traffic. So that is pretty much it, unless Mr. Miller has anything to add.
Thank you, Ms. Moulton. All right, this time, we'll go on to item three H, and this is the Mayor's Award of Merit presentation. And this evening, I have five individuals I'm going to recognize. And first of all, I'd like to say, these are five employees of the city of Anacortes that go above and beyond every day in their work in their prospective departments. And to receive a Mayor's Award of Merit, you have to be recommended or nominated by someone in your department. They write to the mayor, they tell me why you should receive this award. Then I recognize you. You will have your name on the wall in the hall. You're going to receive a certificate this evening, and you also receive a gift certificate to your favorite restaurant. So, but for me, what's most important is your contribution to the city of Anacortes, day after day, year after year, and the fact that you're being recognized by your coworkers is incredible. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk about each person, first of all, and take parts of what was in the letter that I received about you, and then I will ask you individually to come up, and I will present you your awards, and we'll do a photo opportunity. And I thank you all for being here this evening. So the first Mayor's Award of Merit goes to Steve Diebler. Steve, congratulations. Your work managing the maintenance of the wastewater treatment plant and the pump stations is exemplary and critical to the infrastructure of the city. While your technical skills are evident, your leadership and focus on continuous improvement sets you apart. Your work with Safety Committee to ensure continuity of leadership is an example of your proactive approach. Steve manages all maintenance of the wastewater treatment plant, the pump stations, ensuring 100% operation of all critical systems at all times. This is a daunting task with more than 50 pumping stations, numerous other complex systems, all with them aging and in need of daily maintenance or repair. Steve, your work with, as, as a certified pyrotechnician to support the annual fireworks display further shows your commitment to the city and our constituents. We're lucky to have you and are happy to celebrate with you here tonight. And yes, year after year, Steve is out there on the barge, making sure we have our fireworks display. And we all know how important our wastewater treatment plant is. Every one of us in this community appreciates that, and it's a, it's an infrastructure we're all dependent on, so thank you for your contribution. The next person I want to talk about this evening is Corinne Humberg. Corinne, congratulations. Tonight, we recognize your work as a lab supervisor at the wastewater treatment plant. Your work as a lab supervisor has been exemplary, and your commitment to the highest standards continues to move the department forward. Corinne, your work updating procedures, adding accreditation for additional parameters, and ensuring all data is reliable and accurate has been instrumental to the success of the lab. Your willingness to participate in the nutrient forum and advisory group, along with your engagement with the Department of Ecology and Nutrient Reduction efforts, is further evidence of your commitment to your work in the department. Corinne, thank you for your dedication and your thoughtful work for the city of Anacortes. We're proud to recognize you tonight. The next person I would like to acknowledge is Diane Hettenberg. Diane, congratulations. We're pleased to have you and your family here tonight, as we recognize your accomplishments. Your leadership of the stormwater management program has transformed the city stormwater effort from a division of one person into a dedicated team storm that encompasses numerous staff and enthusiasm of many community members. It is clear you're extremely knowledgeable and capable, but evidence of your skill rests in the relationships and the collaboration you have fostered. You have reached out to all manner of city departments, not only to coordinate operations, but to foster a culture of education and share your important stormwater to the health, important knowledge of storm art, and to the health of our community. Your work with the Citizen Science Group, involvement in the Anacortes High School Green Club, and with the Salish Sea School further shows your dedication to the importance of learning, learning in the community. The Rain Garden Project linked our students with greater public bettering in our stormwater footprint. Thank you for the work you do. Your enthusiasm is infectious, and your dedication is evident. We're happy to recognize you this evening. Now we have Katie Ingram from the Police Department. I have the pleasure of presenting to Katie her award at the Anacortes Police Department Staff Meeting last week, but appreciate this opportunity to share her accomplishments with the council and the community. Katie leads the Record Service Division of the Police Department. Her commitment to the highest standards is evidenced by the 100% compliance rating on a recent asset audit of the Washington State Patrol auditors. Chief Floyd shared that Katie's personality, her dependability, and her commitment to quality services, flexibility, a great sense of humor, what effectively joins all three divisions of the Anacortes Police Department together as one high-functioning organization. Katie, it is with great admiration that we recognize you this, this evening. And then from the Fire Department, Tristan Lucas. Tristan, congratulations. Your work with the Anacortes Fire Department has been exemplary, and your leadership both inspires and continues to move the agency forward. Your participation as chair of the city's Safety Committee and the Department of Safety Committees illustrates your initiative and willingness to share your time and talents to ensure the safety and well-being of all city employees. It is your demonstrated skill and devotion to search and rescue shows your dedication to the safety and well-being of all. Tristan, we're very proud to recognize you this evening. Thank you very much. So at this time, I will go over and I will call people up individually and present your awards. Thank you again for being here. For council, the next item is item three I. This is the Civil Service reappointments, and this is something that I do as mayor. I reappoint Civil Service Commission members, and then I present their names to you at a council meeting. So this evening, I'm presenting to you Civil Service reappointments of Vicki Stash. Her term was affected, will be effective through December 31st, 2024. I also am reappointing Mary Anne Gutter Riz, and her term was effective also through December 31st, 2024. I appreciate their contribution and their willingness to serve the community, and if you have any questions or feedback regarding these candidates, please, please let me know. Is there any comments? All right, we'll move on then to item four, which is public comment. And this is an opportunity for the community to speak to the council about anything that is not on the agenda this evening. So if anyone's here from the community that would like to come up and talk to the council, it's your opportunity to come up at this time. Is there anyone online that would like to address the council? Anyone in person? All right, one moment. If you'll go to the dais over here, there's a microphone, and you can turn it on and talk to us.
I'd like to talk about Ladee Westbrook again. Not sure if anybody knows her.
Okay, can you speak? That's great. Speak directly in the microphone so we can hear you. Go ahead.
Libby Westbrook.
All right. And you want to?
Lori, you and I have talked about her for about an hour and a half, an hour and a half. I'd like to know why it's still 15 months and your police officers in Anacortes PD haven't done anything.
Yeah. Well, I can assure you that the police, this is a very active case, and they work on this.
It's not an awkward case. It's, it's a direct case, and your police officers are doing nothing.
Well, I do know that they are working on it. It is an open case, and they're working on it.
That's a politician answer.
Well, it's, it's the truth.
Cool.
But thank you for being here and reminding us about Ladee Westbrook.
Thank you for not caring.
Okay. Is it, was there, was there anyone else that would like to speak to the council this evening? All right, we'll move on then to our Consent Agenda, item five A through H.
Mayor Geir?
Mr. Miller?
Move to approve Consent Agenda items A through H.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. Carter. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. We'll move on now to item six. It's a closed record decision hearing. It's item six A, SDP-2021-0005, the Anacortes Wastewater Treatment Plant Outfall Relocation Project. Mr. Mesimer? Or Ms. Libby Graje?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to introduce Ms. Graje. She will be presenting that project this evening. Thank you, Libby.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to work on sharing my screen here. Okay. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So this evening, we are here to hold a closed record decision hearing for city permit file SDP 2021-0005. The project is called the Anacortes Wastewater Treatment Plant Outfall Replacement and Relocation. The project's location is, this is a linear project, and so the project begins at the wastewater treatment plant on T and Fourth Street, and heads north on T Avenue across Fourth up to Third Street, and then east on Third Street, and then north to U Avenue and out into the Gwemyss Channel. The applicant for this project is the Public Works Department Director, Fred Buckenmeyer. And the contact person is Russ Widener, Widener and Associates. And the project takes place within city-owned right-of-ways and also on state-owned aquatic lands, which are managed by the Department of Natural Resources. A project overview. So the project proposes to replace and relocate the damaged wastewater treatment plant outfall pipe, and the circle is showing where that's located on the west side of Pier Two, the marine terminal at Pier Two, which is operated by the Port of Anacortes. The existing pipe was damaged in a storm in February of 2020, and that was declared a federally declared disaster event. And after considering various repair and replacement alternatives, the city ultimately identified relocating, repairing and relocating the outfall to the U Avenue alignment as the preferred option. And the new location and design will provide greater access for future maintenance. And the new location and design will provide greater access for future maintenance needs and a better mixing zone for aquatic health, and the outfall will also be sized to accommodate all anticipated future flows. So the new pipe will be 40-inch, 48-inch diameter fiberglass reinforced pipe coming from the wastewater treatment plant for 1,631 feet until the Gwemy's Channel shoreline. And from there, the pipe will reduce to 42-inch outside diameter high-density polyethylene HDPE pipe for another 1,030 feet, where it will terminate in an 86-foot diffuser that will be angled to the northeast. The total length of the pipe will be about 2,661 feet from the wastewater treatment plant and then continuing into the Gwemy's Channel. And finally, the existing wastewater treatment plant outfall will be decommissioned after the new one is completed. The review process for this permit application, the permits required for this work are the shoreline substantial development permit, a Type 4, which is a Type 4 review procedure under our Anacortes Municipal Code, and those types of permits are a city council decision. And then a shoreline conditional use permit is also required, and that is a Type 3 Planning Commission decision under our procedures. And because we're reviewing both of these permits at the same time, we're reviewing them concurrently as the highest level permit type, which is a Type 4 review process. So we are here this evening with you. Little project history, there's been a lot of work on this project from a shoreline permitting perspective. In 2021, there was a mandatory pre-application meeting and mandatory neighborhood meetings in February and March. The application for the permits was submitted on May 24 and deemed complete on June 18. The city issued a notice of application with optional CEPA DNS on June 23. There was a 30-day public comment period, which is consistent with the shoreline master program, and that ended on July 23. And then the city issued a determination of nonsignificance on September 27. The notice of public hearing before the Planning Commission was published on November 3, and the Planning Commission held a public hearing and made a recommendation of approval on November 24. And now we are here on December 13 to hold the closed-record decision hearing. So this is a close-up of the shoreline area in the vicinity of where the project will take place within shoreline jurisdiction. The red, or excuse me, the blue and the red-colored areas are the approximate location of shoreline jurisdiction 200 feet landward from the ordinary high watermark. And then also the end-water portion is also in shoreline jurisdiction. The shoreline environment designations for the project area include urban maritime, which is the blue area, and aquatic, which is the area waterward of the ordinary high watermark. And then shoreline residential is also to the east. However, the project is only being located or being constructed within the urban maritime And then some other shoreline features. This area delineated in the red dash is the constitutionally established harbor area. You've got the inner harbor line and the outer harbor line. So the pipe would pass along city-owned city right-of-way to about this location here. I'm not sure if you can see my mouse. And there's a small part of the harbor area that it would pass through. So again, the project is within shoreline jurisdiction, so it's subject to City of Anacortes Shoreline Master Program. The shoreline designations, environment designations of urban maritime and aquatic are the applicable environment designations, and the proposed use is classified as a major utility. And so this is our table that's in the shoreline master program that identifies the different shoreline environment designations and then the uses that are allowed within them. And you can see that a major utility is a permitted use in the urban maritime designation and a conditional use in the aquatic designation. There are some critical areas within the project vicinity. There are geologically hazardous areas that have been identified, and those are tsunami hazard area and seismic hazard area, areas prone to liquefaction. Fish and wildlife conservation habitat areas identified by WDFW include Dungeness crab habitat, which is located out in the channel. And then the entire project area located in the water is located within the regulated So the project components, the upland portion of the project will involve excavation and some rock blasting within the existing city rights-of-way for pipe placement at an appropriate depth. And once the pipe is placed and the construction completed, the road will be replaced to the existing grade and city standards. The nearshore and shoreline portion of the project will involve trenching for pipe placement for approximately 380 feet out into Gwemy's Channel. And the nearshore portion will be constructed from a shoreline excavator, or excuse me, from the shoreline using an excavator, and the buried section in the water will be excavated using a barge-mounted crane with a clamshell dredge. And all of the materials that will be dredged from the shoreline and within the water will be, or excavated, will be removed and disposed of at an upland facility. And all excavated areas will also be backfilled to pre-existing conditions using clean materials. The nearshore portion of the project will also include cleanup of some of the existing foreign debris and garbage that are along this portion of the shoreline at the end of U Avenue. This is a plan view that shows the location of the pipe extending from the end of U Avenue. Here's the end of U, and it extends out into the channel. You can see some of the existing mooring dolphins that the port uses are shown here on this plan. There's some eelgrass in the vicinity, but not within the project's area. This is an elevation view showing the pipe extending out into the channel. So this is the end of U Avenue, so you can see there'll be excavation to bury the pipe under the ground, and it will be buried underground until approximately 30 feet below mean lower low water. And from there, it will be above ground, or underwater above ground, and the remaining 650 feet of the offshore pipe and diffuser will be anchored to the seabed using controlled submergence techniques, and that work will be staged from barges and tugs. So this portion out here will be on the seabed floor. As part of the project, the shoreline at the end of U Avenue is proposed to be improved with a small park. The existing road surface, there's, right now, there's a large paved cul-de-sac in that area. The existing road surface would be removed, which would reduce the impervious surface coverage in the shoreline area and replaced with pedestrian paths and native vegetation. And this, let's see, we figured out that approximately 6,000 square feet of impervious surface would be removed from shoreline. So this is just a concept drawing, showing what the park could look like. This is a draft, and so you can see the driveways are maintained for, the driveway is maintained for access to the existing homes on Cap County. And then a couple of parking spaces are added off of U Avenue with a pedestrian path out to the viewpoint at the end of U Avenue, and then these areas would be planted with There's just a couple of photos looking south down U Avenue. That intersection there is 3rd, I believe, so that's where the pipe would be coming out and heading north. And then the photo on the right is U Avenue looking north towards the channel. The decision criteria for a shoreline substantial development permit and the shoreline conditional use permit are outlined in the Anacortes Municipal Code and the shoreline master program. And the proposal was reviewed by staff for conformance with the applicable criteria, and staff found that the application conforms with the applicable criteria subject to the staff-recommended conditions. Just a couple of key point takeaways. Based on staff's review, the project is consistent with the applicable SMPs and, excuse me, shoreline master program policies and development regulations, and that includes the aquatic and urban maritime shoreline environment policies and regulations, the shoreline use development regulations for utilities, specific use requirements, the shoreline, specific shoreline modification policies, including the shoreline stabilization and judging regulations, environmental protection development regulations, and shoreline public access. And the project is anticipated to provide long-term improvement over existing conditions through an improved dilution factor of the new outfall. It will remove contaminated sediments from within the project footprint. I mentioned it'll remove trash and foreign debris from the shoreline and invasive vegetation and impervious surfaces at the end of U Avenue, and then installation of native vegetation and pedestrian paths at the end of U. This is just a list of the, besides the city permits, the cities require, or the city reviews the proposal for conformance with the shoreline master program and the criteria for approval and the shoreline conditional use permit criteria for approval, but there are a multitude of other permits and authorizations that the project is going through right now concurrently through local and state and federal agencies, resource agencies. So to wrap up, staff's recommendation was approval with conditions, and that's reflected in the staff report in the packet, and the Planning Commission, after the public hearing, also recommended approval subject to the conditions contained within the staff report. And that's the end of my presentation. As far as the suggested meeting order, if you have any questions for staff, I'd be happy to answer those. The applicant contact is also available if there's some questions that I can't answer. And then there are a couple of parties of record that may wish to participate in this closed-record hearing, and then hopefully we would have council deliberation and decision.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff at this time? Right? Applicant remarks or comments? None? All right, then I'll move on to any parties of record that may be with us this evening. If you are, raise your hand, let us know. Yes, Mr. Walters.
Couple of questions for staff. Is there any requirement here, given that we are ourselves the applicant, for any kind of maintenance bond associated with the plantings? I'm glad to see that there's a requirement for provisions for ensuring survival of the plantings, but if you read that carefully, maybe it doesn't specifically say that the plantings have to survive, and this has been a problem before. And so I would like to know that there is a requirement. Maybe staff could tell me how they read that line in the conditions, but also how we are going to ensure that they are replanted if they don't survive.
So I believe that in the shoreline master program, public agencies are exempted from the requirement of providing a maintenance bond. That doesn't mean that...
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, that doesn't mean that as a council, you couldn't require that, but, you know, I read the condition as requiring a plan, planting plan specifications and provisions for ensuring survival. We could, we could update that condition to reflect a certain amount of time or replanting provisions. I think, you know, we could do any of those things with that condition.
I figure ordinarily, we might require, say, a five-year bond for maintenance, something like that. I don't think we should ever spend public money on plantings and not expect them to survive and ensure that they survive at the end of the day. So I would really like to modify that just a little bit to ensure that we have that, some kind of equivalent to what we'd require of a private applicant. Not a bond, but, you know, something else.
It's a five-year monitoring period with annual reports and corrective actions, maybe.
Yeah. And then I see Mr. Meesmer pop on there, and if he's gonna, are you going to say anything more about that?
Mr. Walters, I would agree with Ms. Graje. A five-year monitoring plan would be appropriate.
Yeah. My next question is about the pocket park. I'm glad to see that included as a condition, especially because our shoreline values are more than just ecological functions and values. There are also public access, which includes physical and visual access, but I know the neighborhood is very supportive of the pocket park, especially moving the parking for it back up off the shoreline and up to the street. I don't see here a lot of definition on exactly what the pocket park would have to look like. I know there's a plan, but do you read these conditions as requiring it to be of any particular size or requiring it to look like the plan that they've drawn up?
I would not. I think these, the draft, the conditions, you're right, are not very specific about exactly what that needs to look like. We wanted to leave some flexibility for, you know, evolution of what the, what may happen as we look more closely at what the park includes. But at this point, my understanding is that that's a draft concept plan and that it might end up looking a bit different.
And I would want to leave that flexibility in there as well. However, I know that, you know, the outfall is more important than the park, and so we might get to a situation where we've run out of money at the end of the project, and I don't want the park to go away or get downsized to a 200-square-foot park, especially given the impacts on this neighborhood of this project. So I wonder if at least some kind of square footage minimum, just insertion of a square footage minimum, might be appropriate to ensure that we get some kind of really quality park out of it. And then finally, I'm just very glad to see a condition limiting the blasting to 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, which is more limited than the 7:00 to 10:00 PM for general noises allowed under the noise code. I think that's much better than what it could have been.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Additional comments?
Mayor Geer.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. I am really glad to see in the conditions the development of the park as well as removing 6,000... 6,000 square feet of impervious pavement. That's fantastic. And the native vegetation, also the trees removed during construction shall, shall be replaced at a minimum of three to one. That's all good stuff. The one thing I want to call out is being very important is the direct communication with residents and adjacent property owners. I think there've been some concerns already about that, and I want to make sure that those are addressed so that residents know when, how, and for how long disruption will be going on. Some of the questions that were brought up in public comment were, you know, emergency services and how will the elderly and disabled access their homes? Will they be able to do that 24/7? So things like that, I think, are going to be very important to communicate regularly. Also, that some of the homes are historic and built to different standards now than they, than they would be now. And so although Rob, Mr. Rob Webb was here and gave us a great presentation about how fantastic the blasting will go and how it will be contained and everything, I still see that there could be some very real concerns by residents. And I think their ability to do pre-blast and post-blast damage surveys of nearby homes are, is going to be pretty important, too. So I would like to make sure that people have the opportunity to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moulton. Other comments? Mr. McDougal.
I just had a quick question for Ms. Grange and maybe, you know, to, really to share for those listening at home. Do we have a sense for if approved here either this week, next week, something, you know, quite near term, when start date for construction would be and roughly kind of the, the window of construction we're looking at? Because I also know that the in-water construction, there's a specific window that, that we're allowed to do that work as well.
Yeah, I don't have that information right at my fingertips, but I, I do know that Ross Widener is, is attending this meeting and he could probably give you the most up-to-date idea for what that schedule might look like.
And I can help a little bit, too.
Oh, and Fred, yes.
This is Fred, yep. So that's the big question right now. When can we start construction? The best-case scenario has us starting the marine portion of the work in August of next year. And the upland portion ideally would be started sometime in April and finish just before the marine portion starts, right? That's all subject to a, a number of things that would take me a half an hour to explain, but FEMA funding and permitting and, and material supplies. Right now, we're struggling with the supply chain issues. That could delay it considerably.
Understood. Thanks, Mr. Buckmeyer.
Thank you. Okay, counsel. Yes, Mr. Young.
No, the only thing I, I wanted to just add, and I really appreciate the presentation, Ms. Grange, and all of the, my colleagues and their statements and things that they would like to see come forward, is that we just simply continue to inform the community and the neighborhood of progress. So we are also not just talking about issues, but we're also talking about the good work and the progress that's taking ma- taking place as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Are there any parties or records with us tonight? I don't see anyone at this time. Just making sure. Okay. Counsel, additional, additional comments or questions?
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
Uh, I just, I just want to say it was such an excellent PowerPoint presentation. It, it really is a model, I think, for what staff should be bringing forward to us on these quasi-judicial permit application reviews. I would like to see staff return to us with some, two additional drafted conditions for the planting survivability.
Okay.
And minimum size on the park space.
All right. Mayor Miller, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Mayor Gere, I guess my only concern with the square footage park piece, I mean, I, I agree that needs to be in there, but I'm worried about FEMA funding in, in that portion. Because when you start adding, adding things before we have the final FEMA funding, FEMA kind of looks at us like, you're, you're not getting a park out of this, you're getting an outfall out of this. So as long as it doesn't jeopardize, as long as, you know, Mr. Buckmeyer and his familiarity with getting the FEMA funding tells me that that's okay, then I'm okay with that language. But otherwise, I have, I have some slight concerns with that, that going in there.
So, Mr. Buckmeyer, can you address that?
Yes. So what we've heard from FEMA to date is that restoration of that area, once we're done, is, is, is an included expense, right? That's going to be a reimbursable expense, so. And they know full well that we plan on doing a, you know, a pocket park down in that, down in that area. The, the plants, I would, I would ask that you would take our word that we're going to keep them there in perpetuity, not just for five years. So I don't, you know, the FEMA funding's going to be long gone after, before five years is up. And, you know, maybe, maybe the condition says that, that city, at the city's sole expense or something like that. So they wouldn't, FEMA's not going to think they're on the hook for, you know, a half a decade after they're, after they walk away. And we're, just another comment, we're, the reason that we don't have a final draft on that park is because I really want to meet with the folks up there and, and figure out what they want. I mean, the, the people that live adjacent to that park are really going to be the, the big users of. Of course, the public always is, but I want to figure out what they want. Maybe, maybe there's a bit of artwork or some special plants they want to see there or something. So that, that's, that's why you don't see a finalized, other than the fact that we just didn't know until recently if this, this was actually going to be a viable alignment. But, but that's some of the reason why there's not enough, not as much, you know, certainty as you'd like, as we'd like.
Okay, thank you. All right. So from the council, you'd like us to come back with those things addressed and we can pick it up in a week or so. All right, thank you, Ms. Grange, Mr. Meesmer, Mr. Buckmeyer. Great presentation.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to item seven, other business. And it's, we're going to 7A, which is Resolution 3063, renaming the N Avenue Park as Kalechi Park. This is a discussion and action item this evening. And before we just start this discussion item, I want to recognize that Chairman Wooton is with us this evening from the Samish Indian Nation. And I'll turn it over to counsel for your discussion of this opportunity, or Mr. Lunsford, I'm not sure. Would you like to come up and talk to us about this resolution this evening and the work that you have done on this?
Well, I think that-
Both, Mr. Lunsfords.
Thank you, Mayor Gere and counsel. I think this is a culmination of the work between Samish Nation and the City of Anacortes for years. And we're proud to have this resolution before you. I just wanted to thank counsel and community for the work on this and the Samish community as well, and offer Chairman Wooton a chance to come and address the council if you'd like. I see the microphone to counsel.
Thank you. Welcome, Chairman Wooton.
All right. Good evening, city council, mayor. Honored to be here. This actually started a long time ago with one of my old neighbors, Jim McLaughlin. And, and he really reached out to the tribe and said, hey, what about this park? You know, I think you guys should be involved in it. And that's when we really got involved. And where we live is such a beautiful place. I don't think there's a person here that can disagree with that. And the rich history that is here as well. And the pre-history that's here that hasn't been acknowledged yet needs to be acknowledged. And I think this is a step in the right direction. But from first contact on, the history that's here is just amazing. And thankfully, we're going to be able to tell a story. And I think this is just one step in that evolution of telling the, the Fidalgo Islands history and Anacortes' history as well as the tribe. So thank you for considering this, and my hands go up to you guys. I ask you to see on.
Thank you, Chairman Wooton. And I might say that this, this park, the N Avenue Park, was in Samish history, the Ironwood Village. So it was a very important part of the Samish history and culture. Mr. Lunsford.
And just, this is just the first step to, to rename the park. And then we'll be working, as you can see in the CFP and the budget, as it goes forward, is to do work there with, in cooperation with Samish, to work on art and signage there with the museum, to make it, continue the joint effort to move it forward, to build it into a final park. And thanks to our partners at the Port of Anacortes, as we know that, that area's been under some construction and decontamination, and so that will continue as well as we build it.
So if I could, please do, just one more thing. I just wanted to say that that village site that was on the north shore of Fidalgo Island, where Anacortes is today, Kolech Beach, and you're, you're really good at it, mayor. Thanks for studying that.
A little pressure.
The strait salish is a really hard language to get down. And unfortunately, I haven't mastered it either, so don't feel bad. But that village was there because the village over on South Shore, Agwemus Island, had grown so large with so many people that they had to migrate across the channel. And so they formed another village on the north shore of Fidalgo Island, which was Kolech Beach, which is the strait salish name for Ironwood, which is all over it, at least it used to be all over the shore here. So again, a little more explanation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Gere.
Yes, Mr. Young.
No, I, I just really couldn't miss this moment of just echoing how much my heart is lifted and how much I think that it bodes for our town, our hearts, where we're beginning to go and in recognition of, you know, the original people of this land and our collaboration for going together. So I, I just really want to say thank you to not only our friends of the Samish Indian Nation, but also just to the hard work of our department heads and you, mayor, for helping to bring this about. I am so looking forward to more times of working together on issues and how we can collaborative work together for greater recognition of our indigenous people and, and how we got here and where we go from here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
I was hoping that Mr. Lunsford or really anybody else might describe the park, including its location several blocks away from Coslin Park.
Oh, thank you.
Because there was some confusion earlier this year about which park we were talking about. But not everybody goes to all of our parks, and some people watching at home might benefit from a description.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Walters. So N Avenue Park is located at the northern terminus of N Avenue at the Agwemus Channel, right next to Trident Seafoots. So if you're familiar with that neighborhood, the park is located at that dead end, and it's a sandy beach park with Trident to the west and the port pier to the east and looks out into the beautiful San Juan, sorry, Agwemus Channel with Curtis Wharf. So if folks aren't familiar with that, that's, that's what we want to rename, to honor the Samish presence, both past and present in our community. And thank you for the opportunity to do that. And our goal is to work with Samish, to bring the art there and representations, and we're still working that out with the museum and with Samish and several Samish staff, how we are going to do that and what it's going to look like. So we will bring back ideas as we finalize those in the future. And if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer. Chairman Wooton, you go ahead if you'd like.
Thank you. Is there any one in the audience that would like to talk to us about this online? All right. Any other, any other comments this evening? All right. So counsel, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Young.
I move to approve Resolution 3063 as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we had a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Carter. Is there any other discussion?
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
I imagine you'll call a roll call vote on this. So I'll just point out that I'll abstain from the vote because I work for Samish, although I have nothing to do with this park.
All right. So Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Stand.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to present to Chairman Wooton the resolution renaming the N Avenue Park to Kalech Park. Thank you. All right. At this time, we're going to go on to item 7B. It's a contract award for the 2022 Prosecution Services, item 22-021 LEG-001. This is discussion with possible action. Ms. Swetnum. Good night, Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of counsel. I'm going to keep my comments brief here. I know you've got a big agenda, but in your pocket tonight is the contract for prosecution services in 2022. And this is very similar to the contract that comes to council each year for our contract prosecutor. There are a couple of notable changes that I just wanted to highlight for all of you. First of all, we typically include a 2% infrator in the flat monthly amount that we pay to Craig Kamik for prosecution services and representing the city on certain other matter, other matters, such as dangerous dog cases. And, and we did incorporate that into the monthly fee that's in the contract in the packet. The other change is that in response to discussions with the police department about some of the legislative updates that have come out in the past year, Chief Floyd and I have talked about the fact that the police department needs some additional support from the legal department. And, and after having several, I think, really helpful discussions, we identified that the best source of that support would be the city prosecutor who has experience with our system and how our police force does things. And so we've added, in addition to the flat monthly rate for prosecution services, an allowance for law enforcement support at an hourly rate with a not-to-exceed amount of $15,000. I talked with Chief Floyd, I also talked with Craig Kamik, about whether that amount was a good reflection of what the needs will likely be next year, based on what, what policy changes and implementations we know are coming. And everyone agreed that that seemed like a reasonable amount. One other change that I wanted to note is that the, the contract has always been with, not always, has been in recent years with Craig Kamik. And then Craig worked with other attorneys to help fill calendars when he was unavailable. And he's been working for a couple of years now with Julie Walters. And that has been really, I think, a really good relationship. I think Julie has, has done a good job representing the city and has been a great resource for our police department and staff. And so in this year's agreement, the contract is with both Craig and Julie, with the understanding that billing will happen through Craig's office. I, I checked into that from a procurement standpoint, and because this is a professional services contract, we can make that change at this point. So I think this has been a, a good and productive arrangement for the city, and it's an efficient use of resources. The city's well represented by both Mr. Kamik and Ms. Walters, and I think this will allow our police department to get some additional support in the 2022 year. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
I would just note that I think that maybe in the entire time I've- I would just note that I think that maybe in the entire time I've been on council, which is now 10 years, I don't think that we've done an RFP for prosecution services. We've just continued to roll over the same contract, and now this one quite a bit larger than the year before. While it's not required under our procurement policies, it does seem to me that eventually we should do an RFP for prosecution services, and maybe look at how we ought to, or could reimagine this to make sure that we're getting the best value for our money.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Other comments? Mr. Miller?
Mayor Gear, if, if there aren't any other comments, I mean, I, you know, we've, I've certainly sat through a number of presentations from Mr. Kamik, and I've been pleased with the services the city has received, so I would move to authorize the mayor to sign Contract 22-021 LEG-001.
We have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. Young?
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
Julie Walters is my cousin, so I'll abstain from this vote as well.
All right, thank you. Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Walters?
Abstain.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So at this time, excuse me, go ahead.
Mayor, I just wanted to let you know that for somebody on the computer, the Shoreline Management App side is still up for the podium camera.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I said that on the, on the podium camera, the, the presentation from the closed record hearing is still showing for the online views.
Oh, okay, thank you. Hopefully someone can remove that. All right. Okay, all right. So we're going to move on then, and the next, one, two, three, four items are, are, I'm going to ask you for approval for different boards. So item 7C is the Anacortes Historic Preservation Board Appointment, and Mr. Bob Ross has been, I just, you know, I'd like his approval to be in the Anacortes Preservation Board, and he will serve effective through December 31, 2023. Bob, his experience as an architect contributes much to the board, and his willingness to continue serving is much appreciated by everyone in that, at the museum and on this, on the Historic Preservation Board. I'm looking for a motion or discussion. Mr. McDougal?
Oh, you, were you done, or were you looking for a motion? Sorry.
Yeah, I need a motion to approve, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Sorry. I move that Bob Ross be appointed to the Anacortes Historic Preservation Board.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Ms. Moulton. Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote?
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is item 7D. This is a library board of trustee appointment for Nancy Fisher Allison. Last week, Mr. Vogel and Mr. John Schaefer and myself interviewed three incredible community members, and it was very hard, but we, we found that Nancy fit the qualifications and what we needed to serve on the board of trustees, and so it was Mr. Vogel's and Mr. Schaefer's recommendation that I ask the council for the appointment of Nancy Fisher Allison to a five-year term effective through December of 2026. I will look for a motion there also.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Moulton?
I move that Nancy Fisher Allison be appointed to the Library Board of Trustees.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Carter. Any discussion? Ms. Hunt, would you call for a vote?
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is 7E, the Anacortes Arts Commission Appointment of Todd Young. The Anacortes Arts Commission has asked that we consider Mr. Young, we appreciate his contribution as a volunteer and willingness to serve this community on the commission, and his, Mr. Young's appointment would be effective through December of 2023.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
I move that Todd Young be appointed to the Anacortes Arts Commission.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cleland McGrath, a second by Mr. McDougal. Any discussion? Ms. Hunt?
Mayor Gear?
Would you take the vote? Mr. Young?
No, I just wanted to point out that I'm honored to be able to vote for Mr. Todd Young, although he's not a relative that we are aware of right now.
Okay, thank you. All right. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Then we're going to item 7F. This is for Forest Advisory Board Appointment of Kit Gurwells. We're asking Mr. Gurwells to serve a five-year term effective through December of 2026. This came as a recommendation of the Parks Board, I mean, the Forest Board.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
I move that Kit Gurwells be appointed to the Forest Advisory Board.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Carter. Is there any discussion? Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. So now we're moving to item 7G. This is Ordinance 4002, Establish a New Salary Schedule for the Mayor's Position. This is a discussion with possible action. Mr. Hoglund?
Mayor, this is Emily.
Our Ms. Msue, excuse me.
Thank you. I, I wanted to just follow up on what Ms. Swetnum had mentioned, so we seem to be having an issue with the webinar, and that we're not able to see the dais or the podium at all, so I know that is something that, that we're looking at behind the scenes, so tonight, so just to give you a little bit of feedback there.
Okay, thank you.
A short presentation to, to share with you about Ordinance 4002.
Well, we can see you, Emily, so it's good.
Thank, thank you for that feedback. Tonight, I am following up on a conversation that we began last week about establishing a new salary schedule for the, the mayor's position. As we requested, additional information was included in the packet. I thought it would be helpful to, to share some history. In 2005, Ordinance 2708 was adopted. It established an eight-step salary structure that was adjusted annually by the Social Security Cost of Living. It also created a stipend payment structure for city council members. We have since learned that Anacortes is the only city in the state of Washington that use, uses a step salary structure for an elected official. Following the, the current structure, the 2022 mayor's wage will be $101,752.60 to This is broken into eight steps, and a newly elected mayor would begin at step one of the salary schedule. We worked with Cabot Dowan Associates to complete a salary study of elected officials, directors, and non-union employees. The study is now complete for the elected officials' positions, and based on the study's findings, staff recommends adjusting, I'm sorry about the typo there, adjusting the mayor's wage structure and retaining the council member's stipend amount. And I know that the, the, it's small print, but the, kind of the fine print is that if you look at the, the mayor's salary compared with 12 comparable cities, and look at city administrator positions, if we're looking only at the mayor's position compared to other mayors, the wage is higher than the comparable median. But when you add in the cities with city administrator positions, then it ends up being 29% below the market median. So because the city of Anacortes does not have a city administrator, the mayor is tasked with a lot of the daily operations of running the city and administration of the city, similar to what a city administrator would, would do. And that is why the, the study looked to the, the role of the city administrator in determining appropriate wage for the mayor's position. With the salary, the council member, members' salaries, the, the study found that in a comparison to similar-sized cities, that the, the wage was quite a bit higher for the council members than for comparable cities, and it was closer to the, the amount of a stipend that a city of closer to 45,000 people was, was receiving. In looking at the impact for the, the mayor's wage, if the, the city council were to adjust the mayor's wage to $124,000, that would be an $8,173 increase from step one of the, the current salary range. If you may-
Ms. Moulton?
Oh, sorry. Emily, I have a quick question about this. So that's from the current?
No, that's the projector for '22. That's not '21.
Right, but it looks to me that adjusting it $124,000 is more than an $8,000 increase from step one, if the step one is $101,000.
You're correct.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry that there was a, that there was a typo there. So adjusting the mayor's wage to $124,000 is, is $8,000 more than what the current mayor is making, so I apologize that I did not catch that in the, the package.
Yeah, so that's $8,000 more than I received today. That's what she meant to put in there, based on 2021 salary.
Okay, thanks.
No, you're correct. That was-
If you were confused to not adjust the mayor's wage, then the incoming mayor would begin at step one, and that would actually provide a decrease of $14,000 from the, the current mayor's wage. Thank you for bringing that, that notification. So the, the proposal before you tonight is to adopt Ordinance 4002. This removes the salary range with step adjustments as the basis for the mayor's salary, and it replaces it with a flat rate of $124,000. It ties future year's adjustments to the Social Security Cost of Living Increase, which is consistent with the, the practice that has been in place, and it retains the portion of Ordinance 2708 that addresses the city council member stipends. We have to answer any questions that may-
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
I appreciate receiving the study. I would point out, I think, number one, that the study on page four says that, it implies that the city administrator would be the chief administrative officer in a city that has one, and that's not correct. In a, in a city with a city administrator, if they're a mayor, council, form of government, the mayor is still the chief administrative officer. And I think it is important that we really clearly understand the distinctions, and that we not conflate the city administrator position with a different form of government, the, the council manager form of government. I guess one of my first questions is, do any of these cities that are listed on the chart as having a city administrator have a council manager form of government, or are they all council-mayor forms?
They're council-mayor forms of government. That was one of the specific things that the, that the consultant was looking at.
Okay. And so then, my next question is, I guess, similar to the question I had before, why 124? Why not 125? What, what's the basis for 124? I mean, I, I am very much on board with it, with the mayor's salary being more than what it is now, and looking at some of these cities, even Ocarbor, that makes $65,000, that's, that's ridiculously low salary if you want to attract good candidates for mayor. But why 124? Like, what's, what's the justification for that particular number among the range that's out there?
I think when Ms. Msue and I discussed it, we felt that we wanted a salary that would attract good candidates and keep good candidates, and a, a wage that you could, you know, support a family in this community, and was equitable when you looked at other positions, public positions in the community, CEO roles, and we felt that the mayor's salary today was a bit low, and some of the other roles in the community were, you know, were, were much more, and we were just trying to find a moderate range that the budget could support, that wasn't so out of line with what, you know, the, when we did the salary survey, I think it came, the high range came at 120-something. So it was just trying to find something we thought that would fit based on what was equitable in the community, and based on the, the information we got from the survey. So it was our best, our best thoughts on it.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yeah, and, and to Mr. Walters' question, I think it came up, at least in our committee meeting, is, so then, how, how do you justify, how do you relate this, the, the mayor's position, that's a working mayor, in relation to a city administrator? And I think part of the, the discussion was, well, you know, this is an elected position, whereas a city administrator is probably, has quite a bit of professional experience. And while we've been lucky in the past, we, we, we wanted to kind of acknowledge that this is, you know, various, the next person or the next few people down the line, we, we wanted it to be in alignment with other directors that may have more professional experience and training and whatnot. So we thought that that kind of fit in in relation to some of those other department heads.
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. I, I agree with abolishing the step method. That's just kooky. I, I think sometimes, maybe I'm oversimplifying, but when I look at what Mayor Gear is making now at 115, to make that jump of, you know, to 124 for a brand-new mayor as opposed to one who's been serving for eight years, it's, it's a little bit hard for me, being as concerned as we are with, with money right now and the budget, that it's, it's a little bit tough for me to make that jump, just in the simplest of terms. I think that 115 seems reasonable, and I think even at 125, you're not going to be able to support a family in Anacortes.
Okay.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
No, I just wanted to echo the comments before by my colleagues. I think I totally support increasing wage. I do agree that, you know, I think you've been in this position for eight years, and I think that I'm a little concerned about the big leap. I think that the position is worth it. I'm sort of leaning to, with Ms. Moulton, I, I really think the existing salary, your salary, is a good median, and I think that the position of mayor really is a, an elected position of choice, and I'm not so sure that what we're doing in a mayorial election is recruiting people to run because of the salary, but I believe we have here, our people that ran for mayor, our incoming mayor, came as a result of also- a result of also wanting to help our city and do good. So I think that there's sort of this hybrid, and I think that council can, I guess it's, I'm not sure, maybe Ms. Swetnam can answer that, but it is at the council's purview to increase the salary if necessary. So I'm agreeing with Ms. Moulton on this one, but I do think an increase is very warranted for the hard work that goes into it. The only difference in this case is we have a new mayor coming that we're looking for great things, and you've been here eight years and have done a tremendous job right now.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. McDougal?
Thank you. I'm in agreement with Ms. Cleveland McGrath. Actually, I like that proposed $124,000 salary. I think it's, it's not easy to raise the mayor's salary, essentially. Like, it hasn't been done in 15 years, or, you know, we haven't made an adjustment to that. So I think actually jumping up to that 124, you know, I would venture to guess it probably won't get raised in the next four years anyway, so we're kind of going to be making up for any time. I know we've got that CPI piece in there. So essentially, yeah, I think, I think it is actually fair, and because we won't be jumping it up again in the, in the near future, as far as I can tell, based on precedent.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal. Mr., was it Mr. Walters? Yes.
Yeah, I strongly have advocated for 10 years to do away with the salary schedule for mayor. It creates a skewed set of incentives where the incumbent is receiving much more money than a challenger. And eight years ago, we also had the situation where the mayor was earning vacation time and got paid out vacation time upon separation. But we've dealt with that problem, so check that box. I think that if I were to pull a number out of my hat, I would pull out a number like 124 or 125. I think the attractiveness of 115, actually, is just that it's in the middle. I'm just looking for justification for it, so that when people complain to me that you raised the mayor's salary, I don't think they're going to be complaining to me, but they might complain to the rest of you. You know, what's the justification? Just, I tend to think we have a methodological problem here, because maybe we ought to be looking at comparisons of elected official salaries, or the mayor's salary, to what other executives in private industry make here in Anacortes. It shouldn't be as high, because that would head, that would send it really high really quickly, and it's an elected, a position, elected officials don't get paid that much. But we only had three candidates run, and granted, there are a lot of reasons you shouldn't run for mayor, but we need people to be motivated to serve in these positions, good people. So the position cannot be paid so low that you can't afford to live here, or that you have to have some other income in order to, in order to pay your way. I was just hoping for some kind of justification in the memo or the study for this particular number. But absent that, I'm looking with rolling with 124, assuming that we're not going to apply the cost-of-living adjustment this year, that this is the 120, this 124 is the number for 2022, and that cost-of-living adjustment would take, the first one would take effect in 2023.
Correct. Well, we did our best to come up with, you know, we worked with the personnel committee, we did a salary survey, we tried to be moderate in our approach, and I think, and we did the best we could to come up with a justification. I'm not sure what else we kind of brought to you tonight.
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Young?
Can I, I'd like to add one thing. Now, I am truly vacillating. I do think that the position is worth the 124. I really do. And, but, you know, again, this is an elected position that we understand. The only thing that keeps coming to mind now as I consider this deeply is the fact that, you know, it's, how would we feel about having staff having larger salary than the mayor? Which, you know, given that we're recruiting for public works, we're recruiting for some bigger positions, and it's the duty of the mayor to, to manage, you know, those departments and those staff. So those are things that I think-
So I think, Mr. Young, that is-
Understand the point that I'm making.
I do understand, and that's typical across the board. The directors are all subject matter experts, they've all gone to school in their field, they, you know, they're professionals with 20 years. So it is not uncommon that the mayor makes less than directors, that is, in all cities.
Thank you.
You know, they, they've made this a career choice, whereas the mayor is, you know, choosing to serve the community in an elected role, so.
Thank you for that point. That was, for me, crucial. And so, again, I, at this point, would stand with sort of the number Ms. Moulton suggested coming forward, your salary.
Okay. Any other discussion? Would you like to continue to muller? Does someone like to make a suggestion this evening?
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Young?
Short of anything else coming to the table, I'd like to suggest that the mayor's salary be your existing salary at this moment, and just sort of put that forward as an amendment to this.
Is that a motion, Mr. Young?
Yes, it is.
So it's a motion to amend the ordinance 4002 as written?
Correct.
You can't move to amend the motion, because the motion has nothing.
Okay, well, I wasn't sure what, okay, so we're, he's just moving, replacing the salary. Okay.
Correct.
All right.
Mayor Geer?
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Ms. Yu, can you explain how you, how the $8,173 increase, is that a cost-of-living increase, or from the, from the current mayor's salary for 2021?
Let me just grab my files real quick, sorry. I'm going to just open a file really quickly. The 2021 wage or salary range for the mayor is $96,083.66 to $115,826.88. So there's eight steps in that range that are equally divided into 2.71% step increases. In 2020, a 1.6% Social Security increase was applied to the 2020 salary to bring us to that 2021 range. Does that answer your questions, Moul?
Yeah, no, I guess my question is, so our current mayor has maxed out the salary step, correct?
That is correct.
So, and, and what is that right now? Okay, and so then, that increase that we're, that's proposed, that $8,173, how is that, how, how did we determine that number? Was that just the CPI increase?
No, so what that is, is applying the $124,000 wage suggestion that staff is presenting, that's the increase from where we are, what we are currently paying Mayor Geer, to what the proposed amount would be in 2021 by going to $124,000.
Okay, and so if we took the existing salary for 2021 for the mayor, and we just did a cost-of-living increase, can you, what would that, is that a 6%?
So the, the cost of living that was a, was a 5.9% increase, and I'll pull that up on the presentation.
So then that would get to about $122,000?
So if we made no changes into the salary structure, the, using the current structure, next year's step eight would be $122,660.67.
Okay, so I, so that's kind of where I wanted to get, was the fact that we shouldn't have steps. I think we're all in agreement, we shouldn't have steps. So if we just take the existing eighth step that we currently have and apply the CPI, we're only, we're about $2,000 apart. And so, to me, that seems very reasonable to justify something in that 122 to 125 range. That's where I would be comfortable discussing further.
Mayor Geer?
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you, Ms. Cleveland McGrath. I feel like that's helpful. I feel like I wasn't really getting that picture with these old steps and what would be the new steps, and that was very confusing, so that makes me more comfortable with the proposition.
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Young?
No, I think that the thing that really brings it forward again is the CPI, and that, adding that to the existing salary does bring us near 122. And so if we did that, and I think the, next year would be an additional cost of living, correct, Ms. Yu?
No, so if you were looking at the top step utilizing the current system that is in place where the CPI is, is added to that range, then the top step in 2022, using our current format or structure, would be $122,660.67.
Okay, all right. I can be happy there too, then, if, you know, explaining it that way. I'm okay with it. I think the position is really worth it. We know that, and that's not the discussion we're really having right now, is whether or not it's about hard work and, and all the things associated with it. It's really not about that. What we were just trying to do is come up with a number that, you know, just sort of ties into everything we're doing with budgets and trying to make it happen. I can live there too, and I think I heard Ms. Cleveland McGrath indicated that, so if the others would sort of give their chime in, I think we could get this done.
So, Ms. Yu, just to, just to clarify, so the current mayor, or the way it's written now, the mayor's position does not get a CPI increase year to year, correct?
That is incorrect, Ms. Cleveland. So the recommendation is to continue the current practice of applying the Social Security CPI this year. So the, the current structure does have a CPI that's included in it, determining, you can determine what the rate is for the base structure. I'm hearing a lot of support for moving away from having a tiered system, that's not what is a standard practice in the state of Washington. And my recommendation would be that you include an inflator. The Social Security CPI is the same one that's been in use up till now, so that's why I continued with that process, so that you do not come back every year and have to have this discussion. It's awkward.
And just to clarify, the 124 would include that for '22. There wouldn't be an additional CPI in '22?
So the base wage, based on ordinance 4002 as it's written, would provide a 2022 wage of $124,000, with future years' increases being based on that Social Security CPI.
So thank you. I just, I wanted that clarified for the public and for the rest of council. Yeah, I am comfortable with the way it is written. If anyone else wants to say any words.
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Carter?
Having an explanation, I'm also on board and comfortable with the way it's written also.
Thank you.
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Young?
Can I withdraw my suggestion?
I think it died with lack of a-
Oh, okay, good. I wanted to make sure that it did, to make it sort of official, that I, you know, I really do think is reasonable. The only concern that I had was about the cost of living and where it fit in between all of this, so I'm okay with moving it forward.
Mayor Geer?
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Oh, sure, okay. I recommend adopting ordinance number 4002 to establish a new salary schedule for the mayor's position.
Second?
We have a motion by Ms. Cleveland McGrath, a second by Mr. Young. Any discussion?
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Miller, and then Mr. Walters.
In my personal pay, I've been receiving tax dollars for about 30 years of my life, and I'm very comfortable having it openly discussed, but I will abstain from the vote just because it feels right.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Walters, did you have another comment?
Yeah, first of all, this ordinance includes a line that discusses council salary, and I don't think we really discussed that very much. I don't propose that we adjust it at all, but section two, I think, is sort of irrelevant to our discussion, and I think that ought to be stricken. And then, just as a matter of mechanics, we have a code section that says the mayor's salary will be whatever the council sets it at, which is kind of superfluous, but we could be putting it into the code. And, you know, I'll vote for this just to get this done and not talk about it anymore. But the things that we do ought to be codified whenever possible so that we can find them again, so that we modify the code rather than searching through old ordinances and trying to find what we did incrementally. And as a general matter, we need to be looking in that direction all the time. Where we have a code section, put the number in, it will still say, you know, plus CPI or Social Security COLA or whatever each year, but then other people can find it as well, in an organized hierarchical fashion in the code, rather than searching through all the laserfish documents. So that ought to be our practice. However, we have a bunch of code sections having to do with mayor and council that need to get revised, so we can re-codify it then, and codify this one at the same time. So I'd propose that we do that then.
Okay. So are you, were you asking us to take out section two?
No.
No, we're going to go forward. Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
So we're voting to approve or not ordinance 4002 as presented, just so everyone's clear. Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Abstain.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on then to item 7H, ordinance 4003, adopting a fund-balance policy for the city of Anacortes. This is a special possible action. Mr. Hoagland?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the audience. I'll share my screen here, put up a couple of things that we've been talking about. Okay. Okay. So first, I would like to actually thank council for the really thoughtful discussion we had last week around this topic, the fund-balance policy. I thought it was interesting and really useful. So this is a quick recap of the current fund-balance policy that we have in place, and this is what sets our rainy day reserve. So it's adopted in 2016 by ordinance, and it's equivalent to 20% of expenditures for the following funds. This is the general fund, also known as the current expense fund, parks fund, cemetery, library, road maintenance, Washington Park, and EMS. So one of the things that came out of our discussion last week was clarifying what we were using as the metric for the new rainy day fund. So what, what's being proposed here in the policy tonight is eliminating the road maintenance fund and the Washington Park fund from that calculation. So flipping back to the first side, the first, first slide, we had seven funds identified in the current policy, so- So we're recommending taking out the road maintenance fund and the Washington Park Fund. So the reason, the reason being, the road maintenance fund, it operates actually more like a capital project fund. So if we have resources that become limited, that we would normally base our road maintenance budget on, we can reduce the scope of that, of the work that's being done in that fund. So instead of doing, you know, two miles of overlays, we can do a mile and a half or one mile. The point being that we can easily change the scope of that project, of that, the projects being worked out of that fund, if something happens to those resources to warrant that. So there are several restricted revenues that go into that road maintenance fund already. The TBD, sales tax is the biggest part of that. There's motor vehicle fuel tax, a couple of other taxes that go into that that drive that. So it's, so that's the, that's the reason that we would recommend removing the road maintenance fund from that calculation. As far as the Washington Park Fund goes, that, that fund is usually self-sustaining. There've been a couple of times where there's been an issue with the dock or the boat launch from storm damage or something like that, where it's needed assistance from the general fund. And that assistance would still be there whether the fund is used in the rainy day fund calculation or not. But because it operates on a self-sustaining basis, it's got its own cash reserves that it has to fall back on within that fund. And we can, we can kind of adjust the operations of that, of that budget based on those, based on that, that policy, or that, that process of the self-sustainability of Washington Park. So, and again, the general fund is still available.
May I ask me, Mr. Hoagland? Mr. Walters?
Mr. Hoagland, this is the one place where you lose me. Because the examples you mentioned for Washington Park, the dock issues, wouldn't those be capital expenditures that would be excluded from the calculation anyway? It seems to me that because Washington Park is self-sustaining, it should have the rainy day fund in case there's a substantial downturn in visitors to the park or something like that. How else would it manage? Would it lay people off if all of a sudden visitors stop going to Washington Park, or what?
Yeah, possibly, possibly. Or there's, there are a lot of...
If you were seasonal?
Yeah, there are a lot of seasonal staff that are, that are used to support that fund. So we could, you know, just reduce the number of seasonal staff that we bring on if we, if we needed to. It's a fair point about the, like, the dock work and the boat launch. It's kind of, it's kind of a fine point. But in those cases, there, those projects were capital in nature, but they were actually booked as maintenance projects because they weren't... What we were doing is essentially bringing the value of that asset back up to where it should be, but not adding additional value. So just in terms of that, of that calculation, you know, just because of the way the accounting system works, we would just include those automatically. But I...
So then you wouldn't, you wouldn't exclude them from the definition that you have added in Section Six here on page two?
Correct, right.
Okay.
If we were to do something like build a second dock or something, then those would be excluded. But, but yeah, so that, I guess that was my thinking because it operates... I really hesitate to say like a utility. It's not like a utility, but maybe kind of like a golf course. City of Billingham, for example, has a municipal golf course that's self-sustaining. And it's kind of the, it's kind of the same, it's similar. It's obviously not the same, but it is similar in that it does generate... And for the time that I've been here, it's been a really successful part from that point of view. It generates enough resources to sustain itself. So that was just kind of my thinking, since it doesn't rely on taxes to generally operate, that we could remove that from the calculation.
And would it be a real hardship if we required Washington Park to maintain its own part of the rainy day fund?
Yeah, probably not. I mean, that's a fair point. It's a relatively small fund. I think it generally runs around, you know, $250,000 a year or so. So it's not a, it wouldn't put a strain on that calculation.
Is it just more math? Do we just not want to worry about it? Is that the thinking?
I guess that was, that was my thinking. So kind of, kind of looking at the reason for making this change, you know, one of the, one of the reasons is just to, to take a hard look at the calculation and why, like, why we're establishing that rainy day fund. And if there was a way to reduce that, to free up some of that capital that is currently locked up in the rainy day fund and free it up for operating uses, it would just provide us a little more working capital, particularly over the next couple of years as we kind of, you know, move towards finishing up the build-out of the fiber department. And this is one, one of the funds that just kind of made sense to me to remove. But it's, as you indicate, it's not a huge fund. It's, you know, 20% of, or actually, the recommendation I make is 17%. But say 20%, 20% of, I mean, 200,000 is 40,000. So it's not a tremendous amount of money.
Okay.
Mayor Gere?
Mr. Young?
No, and I totally understand, Mr. Hoagland, what you're saying. My only concern for Washington Park is just to make sure that it has a bit of flexibility. I think our parks are being deeply loved. And as a result of that, you know, the need for support and the need for unexpected, I think is there. And I just want to make sure that, that the good work that's happening under Mr. Volks and, of course, John, that they have a bit of flexibility to make moves that keep our park in the condition that it is and in some ways improve it. Because I know that many of our parks are really being loved hard. And we just want to make sure we can continue to offer the level of quality and the level of service and enjoyment for what they're doing there and doing well. That would be my only concern.
Yeah, absolutely. So in this case, with Washington Park, it does have its own accounting fund. So it does have its own, its own revenues, expenses, its own resource, or, I'm sorry, its own capital, its own assets and liabilities. So in, in the, the way we would go about it, if there was some kind of a, an issue that came up that required an influx of cash immediately, that would be the progression of use of the, of the funds would be to start with Washington Park first. It does have its own cash. I apologize. I don't remember off the top of my head now what that cash balance is in Washington Park right now. But it's got a healthy reserve of its own, and we would use that cash first. And then if, if that didn't meet the event's needs, we would come back to council and just request an operating transfer directly out of the general fund to the Washington Park Fund. So not, not having that fund's expenditures included in the calculation would not preclude it from benefiting from future general fund transfers if it needed it.
Thank you. You answered my question, my concern really.
Okay, thank you.
So the next, the next item is defining the expenditures that we're using in the calculation. So in the past, the way the current policy reads is just the expenditures. So in the past, we've used capital expenditures and even some non-cash expenditures, the write-offs in EMS funds. So, and I think it makes sense to remove the capital expenditures from that calculation because the scope of a capital project can be reduced if those resources become more scarce. So that capital element doesn't really need a reserve to fall back on. And in the EMS fund, we have, we, one of the primary revenue streams is ambulance billing. And the, we do a lot of, I think it's over 50% of our transports are billed to either Medicare or Medicaid. And federal statutes prevent us from pursuing the unpaid portion of the ambulance transport from those Medicare and Medicaid transports. So if, if there's a, say, there's a $600 unpaid portion of that bill, we can't contact the patient directly and request that $600 payment. We have to write that off. So that's, that's what I mean by this, the write-offs that I'm talking about. That's that unpaid portion of those bills. So it's, it's a non-cash transaction, but we do run it through our accounting system, and therefore, we do account for it in the budget. So it's, it's kind of one of those odd things. It's similar to depreciation. We don't, we don't budget for depreciation either. And we do all those calculations after you're in, so you don't see those, those expenditures during the, our budget review. But the write-offs occur on a monthly basis, and they can be pretty substantial. They're several, several hundred thousand dollars. In fact, later tonight, the budget amendment for this year, that's one of the items we'll be addressing because our transport revenues are up. Therefore, our write-offs are up, so those are running over budget. So I, that was one of the adjustments that we made in the policy was to not include capital or non-cash expenditures in that calculation. So this is what the current policy looks like. Again, this is, they took the, took the capital expenditures out of the draft in this calculation and using the 20% of those seven identified funds. It put us at a $6.2 million reserve. Our current reserve is at $5.6 million, nearly $5.7. So what, what I was proposing would be to move that 20% metric to 17%. The GFOA best practices recommends two months of either revenues or expenditures to be set aside as, as a reserve account. Two months would be 16.67%. So 17% is not much, but slightly more than GFOA best practices. This change would free up more cash for unrestricted use, provide a little more working capital in the general fund. But this is an issue that came up last week that, the more I think about it, the more I really appreciate the line of discussion. So it's still, the metric would still be tied to our budget. So it would still allow that rainy day fund to grow at the same rate as the budget. So if we were to define the expenditures and remove those two funds, this is the example of what that would look like. It would be a $26.8 million budget at 17% would be a $4.55 million rainy day fund. So a bit less than what we're currently looking at. So it would essentially be like a one-time reset to a lower amount, and then it would continue to grow with the budget.
Mayor Gere? Mr. Walters?
Mr. Hoagland, does the GFOA best practices paper or statement, does it include any detail on what should be counted as expenditures? Or are we, are we changing this metric in multiple ways?
Yeah, no, it's really interesting. There's, it was hard to actually find, to find anything on that. And that, the GFOA reference comes from a class I attended from GFOA quite a few years ago. So the research we were doing on this, Philip Steffen, our finance manager, he did some review online, trying to find some examples. And what, the current examples we could find were 5% to 15%. And there really wasn't the definition of what those expenditures were. So depending on the, on the type of entity, like a proprietary fund like the utilities, capital doesn't actually run through the, the operating statement. It just hits the balance sheet directly. So in that case, if you were looking at a proprietary entity, that capital would not be included. Governmental entities, of course, using modified accrual accounting, those, those capital expenditures do run through the balance sheet. So there's a lot of, a lot of leeway, I guess, in the interpretation of that two months.
Mayor Gere?
Mr. McDougal?
Mr. Hoagland, I did a little bit of quick math. So based upon the five funds that you have here, that, that $26.8 million number, 17% of that produces $4.5 million in general fund required, essentially, that we're requiring of ourselves. But we actually have $5.00, nearly $7 million. So what that means is we wouldn't actually have to contribute, if we go with this proposal, we wouldn't have to contribute any funds to the rainy day fund until the budget had grown to something like $33, $34 million. Is that a correct assumption?
Yeah, actually, I hadn't thought of it that way. My, my thinking was we would do the calculation and then in our year-end procedures, do a journal entry to reduce that cash balance. But that is an option that, if council wanted to pursue that, could just leave it as it is until it gets to that point. My, my thinking was to try and free up a little bit of cash for the short-term use for just cash flow purposes in the, in the general fund for the next couple of years.
Definitely agree with the thinking there. If we were to keep it at 20%, then we would still have, basically, we wouldn't have to add anything until it's about a $28 or $29 million number on that left-hand column for, for what it's worth, sir. That's the effect of 17 to 20.
Mr. Miller, go ahead.
I mean, I think we have to remember the big picture. The whole exercise is to free up some general fund cash because we know we've got some major expenses, particularly in fiber. But I think there's a pretty low-risk adjustment to our fund policy, especially taking out the road maintenance and the parks fund. Those are very low-risk. If you think about, again, back to the big picture, what is the reason for the rainy day fund? When something goes sideways, you can continue to pay employees so we can start restoring city services when some calamity happens. So, you know, 17% I think gives more flexibility to our finance director in that area. You know, 20%, I could go with that also. But again, we're looking at probably the 2022 year as the most expensive time for getting our build-out done with fiber, and we're using general fund money primarily to get that going. So it allows us the flexibility without, I think, significant risk to our rainy day fund.
Your comments or questions?
Mayor Gere?
Mr. Walters? Mr. Walters and Mr. Young?
Mr. Hoagland, in the proposed draft, you've got 20%, so a 17, a late-breaking suggestion?
You caught that. I didn't see that until earlier today. Yeah, that was an error on my, on my, my end. I meant to change that in the policy. Yeah, I, that was, sorry, error on my part. I did mean for that to be 17%.
And do you need, do you need it to be 17% to free up enough cash?
So, yeah, I just pulled up the worksheet that I was looking at. 17% puts us at $4.5 million, frees up, based on where we're at right now, roughly a million dollars. 20% would put us at 5.3. That would free up $300,000. It just gives, that lower, that 17% threshold just, just provides a little more, a little extra cash flow buffer to manage the, you know, the day-to-day of the month-to-month operations. So I don't know if I answered your question. I guess that would be my preference to have a little more flexibility over the next couple of years. And, you know, I, this is something that doesn't have to be written in stone. I'd be happy to revisit this at a future date as well.
And have we previously adopted this by ordinance or by resolution?
Yeah, it was by ordinance previously.
So here again is an example of a document that's not codified. So difficult to find and harder to update than it need be. We could save ourselves some work by codifying this in the future.
Mr. Young, did you have comments?
Yeah, I did. You know, really, I think as we come to the end of your term as mayor, I just want to thank you for being so fiscally responsible. You've moved us into such a good place. And, you know, this is one example of how I'm grateful for you and your leadership. And I thought that I would be remiss in not bringing this up at a time like this, because this is the very thing that we're talking about. So thank you for bringing us to this point, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Okay, well, back to the, all right. So we have a ordinance in front of me, in front of us, adopting a fund balance policy for the city at 17%.
Mayor here.
Mr. Walters.
I move approval of ordinance 4003 with the one modification, that the 20% reserve be changed to 17.
Mayor here, second. All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Cleland McGrath. Any other comments? Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So we're going to move on now to item 7I, and this is ordinance 3999 for the 2022 to 2027 CFP, and ordinance 4000, and that's the 2022 budget. These are both discussion with possible action. Mr. Hoagland.
Thank you, Mayor. Quickly, I'll share my screen again. So ordinance 3999 for the capital facilities plan and 4000 for the annual budget. So, yeah, a couple of things. This is interesting. So to start with the CFP, one of the requests last week was to not adopt by reference. So we made that change in section 2. Comprehensive plan is amended to adopt the CFP, which is attached hereto. We do include that the CFP template we have, we do include a signed copy of the ordinance in the file. So once this is signed, we'll include that in our file, and then this will be included or attached to the ordinance. Another request that was made was to identify projects that were optional versus required to support growth. So I wanted to just show quickly, one of the departments here, I chose the fire department, because they have a number of different items here. So the CFP, in order to use impact fees or REIT, a project is required to be included in the CFP. So that's why a lot of the fire equipment is included in the CFP, because we use impact fees, or the plan is to use impact fees to pay for it. And then additionally, a lot of the grants that we apply for require inclusion in our CFP to apply for those grants. But so this is, so what I did, we had to work pretty quickly. So I updated the projects that were optional. So if you see optional on these, obviously, they are optional. If you don't see optional, then it's required. So we've just kind of identified the optional ones, but we didn't identify the required. So if they are required for growth, they will just continue to look as they did before. But you can see the, kind of the thinking here with this first project, for example, the ladder truck training tower is something that we consider to be optional. However, the ladder truck itself was not considered optional. The thinking there was the comprehensive plan is encouraging more higher growth in the city, so we would continue to need a ladder truck to support that higher growth. But there are training options probably available where they wouldn't need an actual facility to train with the ladder truck. Additionally, there are some things like equipment that we've already got, and the thinking was if we've already got this equipment, and then we should be maintaining it or replacing it on the identified replacement schedule. So purchase of fire engines, for example, is not identified as optional. We've already got those engines, they're on the replacement schedule, it just makes sense to replace those. This is for station three. We marked this as optional, only because we do have a process in place now that's working, and that could certainly change. We are leasing a facility, that building could be sold or something else where we would be required to do something different. But that was the idea behind the optional identification for the March Point Fire Station. So those were the changes to the CFP. Did want to talk about the annual budget, and Mr. Walters identified this already. It was kind of remarkable. So as Mr. Walters discussed in the finance committee review, we have a lot of estimates that we use when we're developing the draft budget. Additionally, when we're developing the initial draft, we take a snapshot of what our payroll looks like, and then we build on that. And that may contain positions that are not currently filled, or that are filled, and then become vacant later. And each employee is going to have a different cost, different step level, different insurance needs, so those total costs of compensation are going to change. So when we added that police officer, reran the entire budget, the general fund was $40 more, actually, $39 and change more than the original draft, so pretty remarkable. But that additional officer is included. So I think we identified everything that council had identified as concerned, so I wanted to present these for your consideration tonight.
So, Mr. Hoagland, though, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't touch on the, that the budget includes all the costs that we know today as far as employees, but we're still in contract, we're still in negotiation, and we haven't gotten the final salary survey. So we would have to come back in January to do a budget amendment for whatever that difference is, is that correct?
Yeah, that would, correct, that's the thinking. So the salary or the wage issues that we know of, for example, if employees were scheduled to receive a step increase the following year, things of that nature are included in the budget. Because we were in negotiations with all of our unions during this budget development, we withheld the estimated salary increases with the idea that we would come back once those were settled with a budget amendment to accommodate that.
And you have identified the revenue to support that already?
Yeah, we've got sufficient cash flow in all of the funds that are going to be required to accommodate.
Okay. I just didn't want this to go to vote, for consideration of vote, without that being very clear that in January, you'll have to make an amendment to fulfill those, whatever we end up with, with one-time wage increases and union negotiations. I wanted my fiscal reputation to be in place. Okay, thank you.
So council, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have or concerns on either the CFP or the budget.
Mayor here.
Mr. Walters.
Mr. Hoagland, we have been talking about purchasing some new software. We've looked at three or more software packages, two of which really focus on putting the budget, the expenditures, the financial data of the city out on the web for public consumption, but also for city council consumption. You've identified a third one that you think would really help you in budgeting, so that you wouldn't simply be using Excel spreadsheets for that. Where have we left that? What's your current thinking?
Yeah, so that's not included in this final draft that we have tonight. That option that you were talking about is OpenGov. That was a really attractive software package for a variety of reasons. It had a really nice public interface, as well as the assistance in developing budget, doing projections, help with the budget book, you know, the whole nine yards. But it's an expensive package, has about an $85,000 upfront fee, and then about $40,000 a year after that. So it just, because of the cash flow, the cash flow concerns moving into the next year, we withheld that from the current budget. The idea is not to drop that by any means. I feel like, I feel like we need a little assistance in the finance department, and maybe that's the offset. We could hire a half of, half an FTE to help with some of our accounting and reporting needs, but this budget software package might fill the bill for roughly the same cost. But just because of the cash flow, the cash flow concerns going into year-end, I guess I wanted to get through year-end, get through the final labor, union negotiations, and then take another look at it first quarter of 2022.
Well, and that's much more expensive than what we were talking about previously, the other packages that did less. But it seems to me that it's still critically important, because we have so many people who still don't understand the budget, and it's not easy to grasp, especially when it's all presented in Excel spreadsheets. But to back up even further, it seems to me that much more important than the annual budget is the capital facilities plan, because the annual budget, you know, this year is $100 million, but how many hundreds of millions of dollars of capital facilities do we have in the capital facilities plan? And we're not going to get there to all the interactivity that we need between levels of service, impact fees, the capital facilities, whether they're capacity facilities or optional facilities or not, until we've got some kind of software package that brings all that together. And if we had that, and we haven't started any search for that, as far as I know, hopefully something like that's out there. But if we had that, we could be recalculating impact fees every year, making sure that we're capturing the right amount of impact fees every year, make sure we're capturing it on the right projects, and make sure that we're not authorizing projects that we don't want to end up being built into utility rates, or instantly seeing the effects on utility rates of some project that gets included in the capital facilities plan. And until we have that feedback, that interactivity, maybe even, I might call it modeling, we are not going to have a good handle on the capital facilities plan, which I think is the most important thing that we can be doing here in terms of finances. Also on capital facilities, and also on the budget, what are we doing with the City Hall elevator?
Yeah, so that's, as you may remember, that is included in the 2022 budget as part of the facilities budget. I think it's either $200,000 or $300,000 that's identified for that. And the only, my understanding, the only thing that's been reworked on that existing elevator is the hydraulics. So the electrics, electronics, anything else associated with that is pretty much original equipment. And additionally, they would like to enlarge that, so it could fit a stretcher, if necessary, to move somebody out of the building.
Yeah, I've talked to the facility staff about this. It is a serious need. The elevator has almost comical set of switches that look like they're from the 50s in it. I understand people can get trapped in it, and it has to be reset before we let them back out. But it's just the expense, and this is what I've been talking about for years, in a building that isn't sprinklered. Imagine having, what's the fire department limit in this room? You know, 100 people in this room, and catching something on fire and sending them out those two exits. I just think it's completely irresponsible for us to continue to be spending hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars every year, I mean, almost every year, there's another set of expenses for this building, without having a real conversation about how we get it to a point where it has a sprinkler system, and it's seismically retrofitted for earthquakes. So despite the need for that elevator, I don't think we should spend the money on it until we reboot and have a complete conversation about that. But also, I'm not sure how to get there as a policymaker, because the elevator is not called out in the budget, right? It's just a line item, and that money can be spent amongst those line items, and it's not constrained. But also, we have a budget amendment on the agenda, and we're $250,000 over that line item of five, it's like 50%. We're 50% over the facility's budget line item, which is unauthorized expenses altogether. So I am at a loss as to what it is we need to do here with the budget with respect to these facilities expenses, unless everyone is okay with them. Because there seems to be no end to them, and I would like to prioritize roof replacements, you know, things that are in the capital facilities plan that lead to loss of the facility underneath the roof. But we can't have overages like we have been having. And I don't think that's the first time either. I think last year, we had a similar overage in that line item. So what do we do?
Mayor here.
Mr. Young.
No, I just wanted to reach out to Mr. Buckenmeyer. If I am correct, I, at least I was under the impression that the upgrade to the elevator is a requirement now. Mr. Buckenmeyer, if you're there, would you sort of elaborate on that part of the comment?
Yes, thanks. So by required, you mean, is there, like, is there a labor and industries requirement or some other agency requirement that we take care of? And I don't believe we're under any stipulation to, you know, to correct stuff, other than the fact that we've got recognized deficiencies in there, you know, the ADA accessibility or the stretcher accessibility, and the fact that it continuously, you know, goes down, and if you don't have a cell phone with you, you know, it's difficult to get ahold of people to come get you out of there, so.
Okay.
I don't know if that helps or not.
No, no, it really does, you know. Yeah, so I think that this clarifies a point that I think Mr. Walters is also alluding to. Okay, thank you very much. You've answered my question.
Okay, we have item 7I in front of us, additional comments. Ms. Walters?
Mayor here, just to Mr. Walters's question, I don't have the answer, but I think maybe a good place to start would be at the Public Works Committee.
Great idea. Thank you. Mr. McDougall.
Mayor here, thank you. Actually, piling on to Mr. Walters' point, his earlier point about the software and the ability to visualize and to work with the data, I actually, I really like this separation of those items that we are required to do and those items that are optional slash, you know, a lot of those are items that we would really like to do, and it may be all of us or some subset of us. I did a very quick little bit of, like, napkin map, and of the $250 million total, about $130 million of that actually is those kind of optional projects. But some of those are big, like, projects that we'd really like to do, like South Commercial or, you know, fiber is listed as optional, and because it is, it's not required for growth. So I just really appreciate having that separation, and, you know, ideally, some software element in the future that we can also kind of work with the data and see, like, of this amount of stuff that is optional that we may or may not really want to do, like, which pieces of it are funded by grants, which pieces are funded by, like, general fund, you know, tax or REIT or whatever, just to have different visualizations, so we can continue to, like, narrow down of the optional stuff, like, priorities, really. So thank you for the comments, and thank you for that separation, Steve. It's a great step.
Thank you. Ms. Cleland. Ms. Cleveland?
Yeah, yeah, just kind of bouncing off of the last few comments. I think that Mr. Walters makes a very good point about year-over-year and $150,000 here or $200,000, $300,000 there adds up. I think that we have to have a functioning building so that our citizens can access our building department and whatnot. But having software where we can look at how much we are spending on either deferred maintenance or kind of obsolete functionality of our existing building and being able to quantify what, how much it is costing us year-to-year and if we can actually figure out a way or if there is a better option for some kind of new building or a major remodel. I'm not inclined to want to go in that direction. I like the location of this building, but that is something that should happen at the Public Works Committee level and should be a deep dive because we need to, we need to be really conscientious about how we're spending our dollars and what is going to be most effective, not only for the next five years, but 20 years down the road. So hopefully that that can be a Public Works project and, you know, if this, if we can make the numbers work, have that software component to help us support, you know, what are, what we're trying to determine. So that's all I'd like to say.
Mayor, can I just add one final?
Wait, Mr. Miller and then Mr. Young.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So since we've talked about this software piece, I 100% agree. I would love to get this part of it, but as Mr. Hoagland mentioned, you know, we kind of don't know another piece of the budget yet, but I, you know, it is definitely something that I support getting to when we know exactly what our numbers are going to be for 2022. And if it could be this magical holy grail of where it ties into the CFP to the actual budget to maintain, I mean, we've come a long way with the CFP. You know, I know we kind of beat up on it a lot, but over the years, we've come a long way to getting an established CFP. It's not perfect, but it's certainly, I think it captures just about every major facility we have going on. And I appreciate us not having to use the aspirational word. I like optional seems to make sense in there, but to have a software that could make it easier for us on city council and for the public, yeah, I'm all in.
Maybe that's something you could look at in January, once we know what the costs of all this wage piece is.
Mayor Gere?
Yes, Mr. Hoagland.
If I may, I wanted to, I guess, make clear the, kind of the path that we took this past year, looking at these different software packages. We started out looking at something that would provide a public interface just to make it easier for the public to review the data, the budget data, because it is complex. It's not intuitive. It's hard to follow. As we started looking at different options, what we realized, and council may remember, we had a couple of options that, they did council presentation, Socrata was one, DOMA was another. As we started looking at different options, we just started learning that there were variations out there. So that's how we ended up with this last one that I really liked, OpenGov, because it provided both. And we didn't get a chance to really drill down into the details of how that package worked. The personnel from OpenGov that we were talking to indicated that it could provide some of that, some of the things that we know that we need to be doing or should be doing in addition to a better CFP, more comprehensive CFP, but additionally, operating, you know, longer-term looks at our operating budget as well as our CFP. So it is something that we took, you know, in the finance firm, we took very seriously. And that was actually part of the reason we didn't pull the trigger on any of these packages. We want to make sure that we're getting the best, the best model that fits our needs the best and is kind of the best bang for the buck as well.
Mayor Gere?
Yes, Mr. Young.
No, I just wanted to follow up with, you know, and really appreciate Mr. Hoagland, the due diligence put forward and trying to find the right package that will work for us to achieve the very things that we want. But there is also, you know, I just wanted to make the point that there is an urgency of now. I mean, the investment will be money well spent if we can determine where we are allocating resources. It gives us this global view of exactly where dollars are being allocated, where additional costs are, we may not be hyper alert about. And I think that if anything, given where we are by way of seismic activity, fire, all those other things that Mr. Walters brought up in his statement of urgency, I agree with full heartedly. I think as a society, if we look at just Tennessee and what happened across unexpectedly, even though that may be something a little different than what we might be expecting, but at the end of the day, it's the preparation and we know we have these deficiencies. And I think that as the discussion of coming and bringing it through Public Works and figuring out how we go from here, we do have an urgency because we've been kicking this can down the road, at least for, prior to my coming to council and having heard about it being kicked for many years. I'm just arguing for us doing that deep dive as Christine Cleveland McGrath brought up. I think it's important that we do that sooner rather than later. And I think it should be considered a priority of council in order to try to figure out, where do we go from here and how are we going to get there?
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Walters?
I'd like to remind council about something from earlier this year. Public Works came to us with a proposal to pay for a little bit of replacement of our water meters. And that by itself wasn't that big of an expense, but it also wasn't in the capital facilities plan. And now it's proposed to be in there and it's $1.8 million. And as I recall, it was actually a larger amount at the end of the day because it involves putting up towers around town to receive the telemetry from these water meters. It's very cool, but it's very hard to figure out how that really makes a lot of sense from a value proposition standpoint because it only takes one guy one day to drive around every month to read the water meters. It's not in the CFP, so it wasn't built into our water rates when we set water rates when we did that study, but it will be in the future. And this is where the money goes. It's, you know, it's not the 1% property tax increase that amounts to $5 for the average home. It's the 150 bucks you're paying every month in your utility bill. And we let this stuff go by us. I mean, it is a big step from where we are to really exercising control over these things. But if we don't, we do not have the ability to control utility rates, water rates, sewer rates, all of those. And if that's a goal of ours, we have got to do better. But what about roads? You know, we're repaving roads every year and all we do is turn Public Works loose to figure out which roads that they want to do. And some of that is a technical evaluation, but some of it is values-based, I think. You know, if we say we're going to do all the arterials, great. I think that makes a lot of sense. We've now done those. So what's left? We are not exercising our judgment as elected officials to set that program at all. And the budget would be the place to do it, in my view, or the CFP. I think the Public Works Committee is a good place to start, but the Public Works Committee doesn't supervise Public Works. And really, it's got to come back to council at the end of the day for council to make those decisions.
Thoughts?
So, since no one else is asked to be recognized, I guess, I guess I would just like to say that, you know, at some point, we can't reboot the budget as proposed right now, but at some point, we need to lay the groundwork to doing a better job of really exercising our authority as elected representatives to set these programs, to figure out what streets we're going to pave, to make sure that we are controlling utility costs. And that should start in March, you know, not in November. And it requires reimagining the budget process. So maybe we need to do that through the Finance Committee or the Public Works Committee. But it requires a lot more work than we're currently putting in. And I think consensus early on that, yeah, we want input into what streets we're going to pave this year or, you know, what projects we're going to fund, because otherwise, there's lots of utility money sitting around if we rob it to pay for the next sexy new transmission tower instead of, you know, the things that we have to have just to make the system work. So I'm supportive of moving it forward now, as I always am. But we have to do better.
Ms. Walton?
Mayor Gere, I agree with some of Mr. Walters' points. I think the PCI, the Pavement Condition Index, is what drives our pavement improvement and replacement program. So I'm pretty comfortable with that. But I do agree about the, hey, let's get a tower on top of City Hall and, oh yeah, we also have to do all these other things that are going to cost money down the line. So I agree with you and I think all these things need to be looked at harder and worked on, and I will commit to doing that this coming year.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Walton. Ms. Cleveland?
Yeah, just to go a little bit higher level, like the folks before me, I think that 2020, 2021 was kind of a challenging couple of years, 18 months. But with the new mayor, we're going to have a new Public Works Director sometime soon. I think some of these discussion points that are coming up this evening and over the budget and the capital facilities plan is a fact that speaks to the need when we do our next retreat, that we look at each council committee and how, what kind of overarching goals we would like to see the committee, each committee kind of focus on for the next year. Because I think, we don't all get to serve on all the committees, but I do think that we have insight to things that we would like to see discussed and brought back to council, just whether it's an actual specific project or just making sure that it's being discussed with our directors and our council members.
Miller?
I was just taking notes. Thank you.
Okay. Good job. You've got some work ahead of you. All right. So any other comments or motions tonight?
Mayor Gere?
Mr. Walters?
Well, one more thing. Mr. Hoagland suggested, and I backed him up, that a hiring freeze in the next budget could help us with additional cash. I would suggest even a 90-day hiring freeze. So a position becomes open, it's just not immediately refilled, 90 days, with the opportunity for exceptions for critical positions or ones where just the mayor determines can't live without. But a policy like that would make a difference. It frees up cash. It's, you know, it's how we paid for things this year. We could come back and do that by policy later, instead of trying to include it in this document.
I'm a little confused. Are you suggesting, Mr. Walters, that we include it in this document?
No, he was not.
Okay, so I'm just trying to be clear. I was trying to follow it all. So at this point, I have nothing else other than to make the motion unless someone had anything else.
So, yeah, what's your motion, Mr. Young?
Okay, I wanted to make sure no one had anything else, Mayor Gere. I'm ready to make my motion. I move to approve ordinance 3999, adopting the 2022 to 2027 CFP and ordinance 4,000, adopting the 2022 budget.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Molton, and a third by Mr. Walters. I guess we only need the second. All right, any other comments? Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Walters? Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Molton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to 7J. This is Resolution 3064, urging the City of Seattle to commit to a regionally equitable salmon investment in the Skagit. This is discussion and possible action. I'm not sure which council member is presenting this tonight. Mr. Walters?
I'll take that one. This is relatively straightforward. As you can see from the packet, there are a lot of entities that have, I want one of these, but you can, all right. There are a lot of entities that have jumped on to the bandwagon here and we would be one of them as well if we adopted this resolution. The City of Seattle owns three dams on the Skagit River. Seattle City Light operates those dams. They are a complete block to salmon in the Skagit River. There is a section of the water that, of the river that is completely dewatered. There is no water in the Skagit River as a result of these dams. They block 37% of the main stem Skagit to Fish Passage. And they are about to be relicensed because they operate by virtue of a license from the federal government. Now, several years back, the PSC dams, the Puget Sound Energy Dams that we get our power from that are on the Baker River, they were relicensed. And as condition of their relicensing, they had to put in Fish Passage, which, I kid you not, is a truck that picks up fish at the bottom of the dam and buses them to the top of the dam and dumps them in. I've taken the tour twice. It's fantastic. My wife would disagree. The point here is that Seattle City Light, through its relicensing process, should be providing Fish Passage. They have argued that Fish Passage never previously existed. There's some, there's an entire series, a nine-part series of King Five News items on this that show that Fish Passage is very probable in this section of the river if the dams didn't exist. No one is advocating for removal of the dams. They are critical to providing clean energy. But what we are advocating is that they provide Fish Passage akin to what Puget Sound Energy provides. The title of the resolution is that the City of Seattle provide a regionally equitable salmon investment in the Skagit. And the reason for that is that the amount of money on a per capita, per megawatt basis that Puget Sound Energy has spent dwarfs the amount of money that the City of Seattle has spent on fish. And so what we would like, and Skagit County has passed a resolution similar to this, all of these agencies, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, NOAA, Swinnumish, SOATL, WDFW, National Park Service, National Forest Service, they have indicated that Fish Passage must be studied as part of the relicensing. And what we would like the City of Seattle to do is simply do it. Don't argue about it. Don't spend money fighting it. Just do it. Study it, figure out how to do it, and then invest in it on a level comparable to what we taxpayers here in the Skagit, ratepayers to Puget Sound Energy, are already paying.
Mayor Gere?
Mr. Miller?
I read the package, read the resolution. It all sounds good to me and I appreciate Mr. Walters pointing out that it's not talking about taking down dams. It's simply talking about the Fish Passage piece. So I move to approve Resolution 3064 as presented.
Second. A motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Ms. Molton. Is there any additional conversation? Ms. Hunt, call for the vote.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Molton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walters, Mr. Young, and Mr. McDougal for bringing this before us. Our, Skagit is our river. We need to protect it and the habitat. All right, we're on to the final item this evening. It's item 7K. This is ordinance 4,005, amending the 2021 budget. Mr. Hoagland?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and members of the audience.
Members of the council and members of the audience, once again, bear with me while I share my screen. So the, so this is a budget adjustment for the 2021 budget and ordinance number 4005. So I do have the word, the word version of that, which has the matrix of all of these changes, and I thought I would just use this matrix. It's, I think, a little easier to see, and I do have a few notes included in this. I guess all of this is housekeeping, and I know it looks big and daunting, and there's a lot of, some of these elements have a lot of moving parts, but I think council is aware of the majority of what I'm going to be talking about here, and the things that you may not be aware of are really routine items. But stop me at any point if you have questions about any of these items. I'd be happy to discuss these further. But so, so these are all, this is based on line items within the fund that that line item resides in. So the first item that I'm requesting a budget amendment for, this is within the general fund, so it's actually requesting a budget amendment to the general fund, but what's driving the budget condition is voter registration costs. And we pay the county for our share of voter registration costs, and it's, it can be kind of a hard number to nail down. It varies from year to year. And this year in particular, we had an invoice that carried over from 2020, and 2020 was, you know, the general election that had the presidential election, that's always a big cost, plus the election this year where we had the mayor and four council members. So it drove our budget condition over budget. The next item is in the Fiber Department. So when we started the budget this year, we had about $2.5 million identified in capital costs. It's actually over here in my little worksheet. 2.6 million was what we had originally budgeted, as council is aware. The RBC contract for that capital came in at $5.555, so this is just getting, getting that budget taken care of to catch up with the contract that's already in place. It's being offset with the bars numbers, the long-term loan. This is our line of credit the council is familiar with. The balance of that difference we're just making up with general revenues out of the general fund. This next item, these next two lines, these are within the Finance Department. So the Finance Department pays for the City Hall phones, you know, the hard lines that come into City Hall, and for City Hall postage on the postage machine. Generally, that runs around $15,000 to $16,000 a year. This year, it's trending to $20,000. So it's just one of those items, depending on how much postage we use, when we have to reload the postage, things of that nature. This $40,000, we talked about the COVID relief, or using COVID ARP money for utility billing relief. As council may remember, we went about a year and a half, a little over actually, with a moratorium on utility shut-offs. So at the end of that time, when we started this program, when we first started looking at it, we had, I think it was closer to $80,000 in utility billing arrears. And through some really diligent work by the finance staff, they called every single person that was on that, on that list, and I was able to get that number down to $40,000 in relief. But that flowed through the Finance Department as well. So this $89,000 budget amendment, this is for new building department software and tablets. I believe the split is 85 for the upfront cost for the software, $4,000 for the tablets. This has been a long time in coming, and I know everybody is excited about this for the Building Department. It's offset with Building Department revenues. It's, Building revenues continue to exceed our expectations this year. This is the $250,000 that Mr. Walters referenced earlier. This is in the Facilities Department. So the DOT 48 is repairs and maintenance. We have taken a deep dive into this and are currently, you know, continuing to look at this bars number. But what we're looking at is not just the items that have been worked in this bars number, but projects that span multiple departments to make sure that we have adequately allocated those costs. And we have found, I think, about $20,000 in projects that were multi-department that we're going to allocate back to the utilities for their portion of it. There was also about $63,000 in COVID-related costs that we identified that weren't necessarily part of the, part of the thinking when we put this budget together. And another $154,000 in unexpected costs that came up as we were going through some of these repairs and repair work that the Facilities Department was doing. So one thing that they did, they worked hard to get stuff done in facilities that would be hard to work in during normal times. For example, they got a lot of work done in the senior center. Because of the COVID shutdown, they were able to get more work done, a lot of interior painting done, you know, they did some flooring work. There were, actually, I think Mac said there were three water heaters that went out over there that needed replacing as well. They did some work at Fire Station 1. When they started digging into that, they found some rot that expanded the scope of that project as well.
Steve, was there also supply costs that exceeded our estimates?
Yeah, and that was another thing that they ran into. The supply chain issues trickled down into the cost of supplies for this type of maintenance around City Hall. So just generally, the cost of supplies exceeded what they were used to, what they had seen in the past. So this, and I would, so this is being funded with REIT. We're able to use REIT 1 for public facilities for this type of work. And this is, so this transfer in, in addition to the original budget of $500,000, this additional $250,000 would bolster that general fund cash amount that we were kind of talking about earlier as well. So if there are additional comments or questions about, about or around the facilities, we're, you know, maybe now is the time to have that discussion. Otherwise, I can, I can move on.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
Well, I guess my question would be, was there an opportunity to stop spending when you ran out of budget?
Yeah.
I would expect that that's the standard operating procedure, that when you run out of budget, you stop spending. It's something else if the one project you're doing this year came in higher, and there's nothing you can do to constrain the budget, although heads up would be good. But I don't recall any of those, so I think these were all fairly small expenditures individually.
Yeah, and I think that's a fair point. And I think a lot of this is oriented around, and you made a point earlier that we saw the same thing last year, and our Facilities Department really took advantage of these buildings being, you know, shut down from public, public access. So they, you know, they have their standard list of things to do, you know, re-roof, pump stations, you know, things of that nature that are on their standard to-do list that they want to get knocked out. But additionally, they took advantage of some of these facilities being shut down to get work done that they normally wouldn't be able to, or at least were able to do much easier because of the lack of public access.
But to Mr. Walters' point, if we, if we had checks and balances for them to circle back when their, when their budget's running out, that should have been done, or could be done, or should be done in the future. It's never a lack of, I just think maybe we didn't have the checks and balances there. I mean, you know, they start a project at the senior center, and they find rot, they get the fire department. So it wasn't that we're not being good stewards, it's just the cost ran up without us maybe checking back as we went in the Public Works Department. So, but, you know, point, well, I mean, you're well-taken, Mr. Walters.
I appreciate that validation, Mayor. I, I think that at the end of the day, the problem is that they're competing interests for those funds, you know? We could be spending REIT on other things. And if our expression of what our priorities are is through the budget, we lose the ability to express those priorities if we just go beyond the limits.
The next item on the list here is professional services line. This is in Fund 401, which is our water fund. And this is for additional consulting for the old water treatment plant demolition. Next line down, this $5,605, this is to replace the sign machine up at operations. So this is one of the pieces of equipment that is actually managed through the DIS Department, our computer department. It did have full replacement charges in place. They tried to get a little bit of extra life out of the machine, and it ended up conking out earlier this year. But because we had full replacement funds, we're requesting to go ahead and do a budget amendment to pursue that. Likewise, the upstairs coffee machine has full DIS reserve funds in place. It's not functioning properly any longer. Probably needs to be replaced sooner rather than waiting until next year when we get into the next budget cycle. This next project is a little bit complex, so bear with me as I go through this. I know the council's been kept up to date on the cemetery project. There's a lot of moving parts with this one, so feel free to stop me at any point here. But the overall budget amendment that we'll, that we're looking at now is $455,000. This is in addition, here's my little worksheet over here. This is in addition to the original $250,000 budget, so we want to get to $705,000. So the way we're offsetting these additional costs is through the Cemetery Improvement Fund. So the Cemetery Improvement Fund is a restricted cash line that was set up years ago, and part of each plot sale goes into this fund, and it's set aside for future use for the cemetery. So there's $178,000 available there now. This is for impact fees, the $94,000. This is an impact fee-eligible project. There's $94,000 currently available in park impact fees, so we'd like to allocate all of those towards this project. When they did the cemetery project up there, they also put in a new road. So there's $162,000 in roadwork that we can use REIT to pay for that. So that's part of this budget amendment as well. That still leaves us a little bit short. Based on current projections, we are anticipating being $21,000 short on this project. So what we would like to do is an inter-fund transfer from Fund 101, that's the Parks and Recreation Fund. There is sufficient cash in that fund to do a short-term loan to Fund 108, which is the Parks Capital Fund, which this project was worked out of. So would I, if council approves all of this, and this is my recommendation, I think this is the best way forward, I would put on next week's consent agenda an ordinance to authorize an inter-fund loan. It would be a three-year term at 0.98% to be paid back with simple interest payments on top of the principal. And the 0.98% interest rate comes from the current three-year treasury. So when we have done interest, or I'm sorry, when we've done inter-fund loans in the past, the treasury is what we use as a marker to represent the lost interest revenue that that money could have earned otherwise. So, so that's, and then the bottom part of this is just the accounting for the rest of the, of those activities. So this is the, this is the activity for the Parks Project or for the Cemetery Project. Everything below that is just the accounting that we need to get in place for the transfer out of REIT, the transfer out of impact fees and the inter-fund transfer. Next project is also in Fund 108. It's the Parks Capital Project Fund. And this is a rollover for the depot restroom project. Council may remember this, from last year in 2020, we started the project. It didn't complete till this year, so this is just getting the paperwork caught up with the project, essentially. It was primarily paid for with an economic development grant. It did have a match, which we would use REIT 1 to pay for, of $26,500. This next item, we've talked about this kind of in, in reference to a different project, but this is closed out of the LID fund. So council may remember, I think Mr. Walters mentioned this during the finance update as well, the, there was a new GASB that required, or that changed the way trust funds were defined. So we had an LID fund that, along with some other funds, we closed out of those trust funds and put them back into their parent fund, essentially. The LID fund didn't have a parent fund, so we put it into the general fund, kind of for safekeeping. But that was part of the, part of the resources that were identified that we would like to use for the new Washington Park restroom. So what this would do is transfer this, the remainder of those LID reserve funds, $97,400, from the general fund back into Fund 108 to help pay for that Washington Park restroom that's in the budget for next year.
Mr. Hoagland, would you just say what the LID fund is? LID, the acronyms are just?
Yeah.
Grow on it, I'm sure. Right.
Yeah, so LID stands for Local Improvement District. And we, the city of Anacortes hasn't had an LID program for a number of years. The last one that I know of was paid off in 2008, right after I started. But I remember at one point talking to the previous finance director, and he talked about running LIDs constantly in the city to get improvements put into neighborhoods that didn't have curb, sidewalk, gutter, or even paving. And so they would establish these little local improvement districts in a neighborhood to get all that done. And the neighborhood, each property owner would then pay their share of that. So there, it was, the LIDs were actually a debt that the city was incurring. It was all internal. But there's state law that required a reserve fund to be in place in case there were property owners that didn't pay their fair share. It would be covered by that LID reserve. There was, at one time, a substantial amount of money there, and it was before my time, I think it was a half a million dollars was used out of the LID reserve fund to help pay for the Tommy Thompson, the Tommy Thompson trestle trail. And when we were talking about the use of these LID funds, the internal discussions we were having, it made sense to us to use those for something that the community could benefit from. And that restroom at Washington Park was a need that kind of rose to the top, so that's how we ended up with that project for those funds. The next budget item is in Fund 107, which is the Washington Park Fund. The utility services budget line was, is trending to be over budget, and it's just from the additional use that they've seen out there. So the camping fees have far exceeded what we had expected, and that's what is being used to offset the additional cost for utilities that's being experienced in Washington Park. The next program here is in the overlay, is the overlay program. This is in Fund 104, the street maintenance program. And this, there's a combination of things at work here. It's primarily these items, the overlay program and salaries and wages, both exceeding budget by $200,000 and $250,000 respectively. We pulled back on the overlay program last year in 2020 because of COVID concerns. We just slowed everything down, this program being one of those. So a lot of this overage was due to that, that kind of overflow from last year, or picking up some of the work that didn't get done last year, doing that this year. And the salary and wages, I've talked with engineering about this a couple of times And the salary and wages, I've talked with engineering about this a couple of times this year. We've seen this in the past, council may remember this from past year-end budget amendments where our salaries were running over what we had budgeted. And it's, there's been a shift in how those overlay programs are developed. We used to do, it was kind of like one big program a year that they would, they would do an overlay on. And that's, that's, it's become more the norm to do several projects in a year, three, four, maybe five smaller projects in a year. And all of those projects require more staff time, you know, the engineering time primarily. So when the engineers are working on a project, they job cost their time to that project. So they're working more in the overlay program than we initially budgeted for. They're working less in like the street program or the utility programs, and more in the overlay program. So I've already talked to Tim Holman in engineering, and we've agreed in the first quarter next year to revisit this and make sure that we have a robust budgeting process for next year's overlay program. We're also seeing a little bit higher cost in our streetlights. Part of this is due to LED conversion, but part of it is just due to increased electricity costs. I have been working with engineering on this, and Russ in the, Russ Pittis, he's directly reached out to PSE about this to try and get a better understanding and make sure that what PSE is seeing is consistent with what we're seeing here. Likewise, operating supplies are up because of the additional work. So all that adds up to 555,000, which we would balance out with a REIT transfer. Earlier, when we were talking about the fund balance policy, I was talking about write-offs, and this is the uncollectible portion of those ambulance billings. So we have two, two programs. I don't really understand why the feds did it this way, but a few years ago, the federal government had kind of acknowledged that what they were paying for Medicare and Medicaid transports was significantly lower than what the actual cost was to providers. So this is where they came up with the GEMT program. Instead of just adding additional funding to those Medicare and Medicaid reimbursements, there's a whole new program. But they both operate the same way. So we're, we're seeing more write-offs because we're seeing more ambulance billings. So they just, they work hand in hand together. And these are non-cash transactions, but they do run through our operating system, so they, they do hit the budget, so. In Fund 113, this is the ACFL fund, so an additional $15,000 for professional services. And this is due to additional work with the Skagit Land Trust that the Parks Department is doing on behalf of the ACFL. Fund 440 is the sewer fund. We're exceeding what we initially budgeted, and this is all due to the asphalt project. The second line, taxes and operating assessments, this is something that you'll see when we get down to the storm drain fund, we'll see, you'll see the same thing. But this is, there's two parts to this tax. One part is that when our revenues increase, the amount we have to pay to the state increases. And additionally, the amount that the utility pays to the general fund for utility tax increases. So this is kind of a, kind of a two-part item that the budget line for taxes just needs to catch up to where it really should be. So it's just housekeeping to get, to get that number squared away. This 500,000 for debt service just wasn't budgeted to begin the year. So in October of 2020, we did a bond issue for, to raise money for both the water and sewer fund. So this is the sewer fund portion of that debt service. So unreserved fund balance is what we're using to offset that, all of that. But it's, it's just an accounting entry to use those resources that we, that we have accumulated for these very purposes. 445 is the storm drain fund. So this is another one that's a little bit complex because of the activity we ran into during the year. So professional services was up because of additional work that we needed to do out of the, out of the fund. Taxes, we just discussed for exactly the same thing, more taxes to the state, more taxes to the general fund. And then capital outlays. So we initially budgeted, I think, 400,000 in capital for the year, and that was to do the parking lot project at city hall. We did run into a change order on that. You may have heard, may remember from an update on that, that they ran into an oil tank that was buried out here on the edge of the parking lot full of oil that had to be, that had to be taken care of. There was a lot associated with that. But the biggest issue was an emergency repair up on Fidalgo Avenue, and that was in the neighborhood of 400,000. I think 391,000 is where that project sits at this point. That was not anticipated when we put the budget together. So we're identifying, I'm identifying on the budget amendment here, two sources, two resources for supporting this. Part of it is in just unreserved fund balance, which is our cash reserves. And part of it is an inter-fund loan transfer in. So what, so similar to the, the Parks Capital Project where we're asking for an inter-fund loan, I want to get at least the groundwork laid if we need to process an inter-fund loan. So since I put this together, there's a couple of things that, that have come up that make me think that we, this fund might be in better shape than, than I had initially thought. So I think we brought in more capital cash during the year through the GFC process and had more capital carryover last year. So there's a higher level of capital cash available to offset this. But in addition to that, the, I was talking with Tim Holman just, I guess it was Friday we met, and then he sent the spreadsheet earlier, earlier today about that project. And he's done a reconciliation that shows some of the work that they did out there is actually allocable to different, different funds. Specifically, they did some sewer work as part of that project. So I think about 30,000 of that is allocable back to the sewer fund. They also did a bunch of sidewalk work, so some roadwork and sidewalk work is part of that, that we can allocate back to the existing budget in the, in the road fund. So there's another reconciliation to do that, that may reduce the need of this 200,000. That may be something less than that. And if, once the final numbers come in, it's possible we wouldn't need that inter-fund loan at all. But I do want to leave it in place just in case, so we do have that framework set if we do need to do that inter-fund loan transfer. And I would set both of those by ordinance. I've actually got both of those, both of those drafted out. I haven't got ordinance numbers from this yet, but, but it's the same, same general language to just do a short-term, a short-term loan. This is the, the details of the loan on a three-year term at 0.98%, which can be paid off early if, if we have the available resources. So that was, yeah, so that's that. I know there's, there was a lot there, as I said, most of this, if not all of this, is really housekeeping. But I know we went through a lot, and I'm happy to answer any questions that, that you may have now that we didn't address during the, during the review. Budget amendments are required to be adopted by ordinance. We do have the amending ordinance here, number 4005.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
I thought that Mr. Hoagland did quite a good job explaining all the various line items here and the differences and the reasons that we didn't achieve the budgeted amounts. The facilities repairs and maintenance still is a stickler for me. That's 250,000 that, at a REIT one that we could have spent on sidewalks or parks or, you know? Maybe the solution there is to budget that amount for sidewalks, so we spend the money before it gets spent in an unauthorized fashion by departments that aren't meeting their budgeted amounts. Lessons for next year. I move approval of the budget ordinance, a budget amendment ordinance as presented.
Second.
If we have a motion on Mr. Walters, a section by Mr. Carter. Is there any additional comments or conversation? All right, Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote?
Thank you, Mr. Hoagland.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
No.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Motion carries. I want to thank you all for a really deep dive tonight.